Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, June 11, 2024, study session of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with all council members present this evening. And first agenda item this evening on our agenda is item 2A, which is a discussion on our community oversight of law enforcement recommendations. And here this evening to present to us is Stacy Ray, our Director of Strategic Planning and Performance, along with several members of our Social Justice and Equity Commission. But I'll turn it over to Stacy.
Yeah, thank you. Mayor, Mayor Pro Time, council members, good evening. For the record, my name is Stacy Ray, Director of Strategic Planning and Performance. I use she/her pronouns. So I've served as the project manager of the community oversight of law enforcement process. And tonight marks another significant milestone in this body of work. Tonight is a night where we have our commissioners come to share the recommendations with all of you so that we can have discussion around those tonight. So I want to start by just talking a little bit about... Nope. So I'll just, I'll go ahead and start off with introductions while we're waiting for that to move forward. But you have the slides in front of you in terms of our agenda tonight. So we'll do some welcoming introductions because we have our commissioners. We also have some other folks I'd like to welcome into the room for tonight. As staff, the project team will provide process and process overview and also a brief overview of the recommendations. Nope. Here we go. Okay. Okay. So we'll provide a process overview and an overview of the recommendations. And then we'll really turn it over to our commissioners to be able to talk with you about the recommendations that they're bringing forward for discussion tonight. So again, just a kind of a few introductions before I go there. Oh, I'm sorry. And then we'll, we'll wrap up. And then I'd like to have an opportunity to just open up the floor for any other comments, acknowledgements, or sharing around the experience of the process before we wrap up for tonight. So I'll start with a few introductions and acknowledgements for who's with us. So the project team for this project included myself, Assistant City Manager Debbie Sullivan, who we know is on sabbatical right now but would have dearly loved to be here. So we're going to be thinking about her the entire time. Also, our consultant Catherine Olson. We have Deputy Chief Sam Costello who tonight. And William Sullivan, who's here as well. Where'd you go? Oh, back there. So William is in, works in our Office of Performance and Innovation, has been providing support to this project as well. So we want to recognize him. And I also want to welcome that we have Police Chief Rich Allen with us here tonight. Throughout this process, we have had 11 just exceptional community members in participating in the development of the recommendations. The commissioners tonight are the ones to carry the baton forward and to have the conversation with you. But we also still want to recognize those community members. So I want to take a minute to just welcome, we have one of those community members with us. So I just want to acknowledge and welcome Chrissy Carroll. Hi, Chrissy. I'm not missing? Yeah, okay. So, but just to really acknowledge the community members, I want to go ahead and list them off. So just, you know, give me, give me a moment here to do that. So our community co-designers included JD Barton, Devon Brim, Chrissy Carroll, Jase Denton, Candace Hannah, Shawna Hawk, Olivia Hickerson, Alejandra Hunt, Robin Martin, and Tiffany Walker. And so while we don't have them with us, they're with us also in spirit. So the other piece I'd like to acknowledge before I get started is our Olympia Police Department participants. So our Deputy Chief Costello is going to speak a little bit more to that. But I just want to highlight how exceptional the involvement and representation was from OPD. So it was, it was authentic. It was throughout the process and it was all levels within the department. And we're really grateful for that part, that input that could be part of this body of work. And lastly, before we get going, I just want to invite our commissioners to go ahead and introduce themselves. So I'll start with our co-chair, Genevieve.
Good evening, everyone. My name is... Thank you. Is that better? My name is Genevieve Kenseko Chan. I'm a chair of, co-chair of the Social Justice and Equity Commission, and I use she/her pronouns.
Hello, my name is Fozia Muhammad Ali, and I'm part of the commissioners, and my pronoun is she/her.
Hi, I'm Dr. Amna Kazee. I'm part of the Social Justice and Equity Commission, and I pronounce my name as she and her.
Good evening, Mark Hodgson, a member of Social Justice Equity Commission. He/him, thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you. So let's go ahead and move into tonight's agenda. So when we embarked in this process of May of 2023, we did so with the following direction from council. And the purpose that's really was focused on ensuring accessibility, objectivity, transparency, and accountability, and education. So we wanted to ensure, take through this process, ensure there was accessible complaint process, there are objective investigations without bias, to strengthen the confidence and trust in the department, increase the transparency, improve policies, practices, and training, and really develop a better public understanding of the Olympia Police Department. So the process that we used was a highly collaborative one. So we, we had different community members. We had commissioners and we had representatives from the Olympia Police Department participating in this and all had a hand in the development of the final recommendations. So the groups worked both independently in developing draft concepts and then to get, and then together in the, in the later half of the process to refine those. The process also included opportunities for community members to follow along, follow on Engage Olympia, to read summaries of all the meetings, and to also provide input to us along the way and participate in a community survey. So now at this point, we've reached the last phase where you can see where it's the role of the Social Justice and Equity Commission to deliver the recommendation to you all to take action. So as part of this effort, we spent a significant amount of time at the beginning to ensure that we, that everyone who was participating had a foundational understanding of the Olympia Police Department. So our purpose was to ensure that we started from a shared point of understanding of all parts of the department, what's involved in policing in the city of Olympia. And we also wanted to ensure that our participants understood the current existing system of oversight, including the role and responsibilities of the existing auditor. And we also wanted to ensure that everyone participating in the process understood the scope and scale of the department's annual data around uses of force and complaints. So I'm going to touch on a few educational points because it's just helpful in terms of having this conversation around the recommendations. So currently, the Police Department has a system of oversight that is multifaceted and multi-agency. So that system has parts within the department with an Office of Professional Standards and processes for uses of force. And in the City Manager's Office, there's a City Council hired civilian police auditor. Outside of the city, there's the Regional Capital Metro Independent Investigation Team, which is periodically activated when there's a critical use of force incident. There's a newly established Washington Office of Independent Investigations, which, when it's fully functional, may also opt to lead investigations into critical incidences. And lastly, there's a State Criminal Justice Training Commission, which has a role in training investigations and managing certifications. So in launching this process and considering clearly what is the problem that we're trying to solve, it was really important for our participants to understand the current system and could use that to really think about what's working, what's not working, where might there be gaps in meeting the needs of our community. So in terms of understanding the scope and scale, so we pulled together data sets to be able to talk about with our participants around uses of force and complaints. So you'll see three years' worth of data here. I want to acknowledge that one of the things that was reflected in OPD's recent comprehensive department analysis is that the department's employees and command staff are dedicated, committed, and enjoy providing police services to our community. The report stated that the department is very progressive compared to most law enforcement agencies. And in addition, we know from the current auditor's regular reports that the department does have an extremely low use of force rate when considering the annual number of calls for services and arrest data. And unlike other cities that are implementing oversight, Olympia is not under a consent decree or a legal mandate. We're not responding to an incident or patterns of concern. But instead, we recognize that we're hearing from community members that they still are having experiences and perceptions of law enforcement that can be negative. And so we're taking this step as a way to take responsibly, to consider critically, you know, how we can improve our processes and our transparency, how we can improve our education, and how we can improve trust and confidence in the department proactively. We can be intentional now by having taken this time to put in systems that maintain and contribute to continuing this low use of force rate and perhaps even lower it more. We have also had the opportunity to think about how can we be proactive in increasing community involvement in policing in different parts of policing, not just oversight, but in other ways to increase community involvement. In particular, community members that have different lived experiences and different perspectives. So we sought Catherine Olson's involvement in this process because she is nationally recognized for her expertise and experience in oversight. And she's provided hugely invaluable guidance and technical expertise, both to the staff team and directly with our participants in this process and developing the recommendations. And one of the things that I love about Catherine is she has consistently reminded us that there's no best framework. There's no one model. There's no store where you can shop for oversight, you know, à la cart. Like, it really has to come from what are your community's unique needs? What is the problem you're trying to solve? And who and how do you want them represented in community involvement in policing? So with that in mind, she did however introduce to us that there are some pretty widely recognized attributes that she'd want to ensure are built into a framework of community involvement in policing. And so I'm, I'm not going to read through these in detail because you do have them in front of you. But I just want to highlight that we believe you'll see these reflected in the recommendations. So we have impartiality. We have independence, transparency, and accessibility. We have community engagement. We have regular assessment. We have access to information. And we have, you know, adequate funding and resourcing. So next I want to move into the draft recommendations. And I'm going to start by highlighting some of the work that was done by our participants to really lay the foundation for developing recommendations because we don't go straight to to-do. We have to do a little bit of pre-work to think about what are the outcomes that we want and how do we want to feel about this process at the end? So one of the things we did at the outset with, with both our commissioners and with our community participants was identify guiding values. What are the values that those groups felt like at the end of the day they wanted to see represented in the recommendations? And so I highlight here the shared values that were brought forward from both the Social Justice Equity Commission Subcommittee and also our community participants, and then overlaid that with the work that OPD had done recently to update their department values. So you'll see what rose to the top is accountability, transparency, and integrity. And other shared values that were highlighted were empathy, community, and trust. So and I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this piece because I think it's really important to understand all of the contributing information that went into the development of the recommendations. So first and foremost, we have our commissioners. And we have our community participants who brought their learning and they also brought their lived experience and their perspectives to the table clearly throughout the process. And I want to again acknowledge the Olympia Police Department members that did the same. I also want to highlight that we look to those, those attributes and that through Deputy Chief Costello and Debbie Sullivan and Catherine, all having been gone, attending the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement Conference, we can bring some kind of, some of the best practices that we know are being looked at today into this work. I'm going to turn it over to Catherine and admit to talk about research on other cities. But I do want to highlight before I turn it over is that we were consistent throughout the process in really being, providing venues or ways for community members to submit comments and input along the way. And those were taken into account in the development of the recommendations as were they shared with our participants. We also had conversations with you all along the way. And we also sat down with our Current Community Use of Force Board members. So I want to give the Deputy Chief a minute to just talk about OPD's involvement. And then I'll turn it over to Catherine to talk a bit about the research and the work that she has done as well. So go ahead.
Thanks, Stacy. I'm Sam Costello, and Deputy Chief of Police, and I use he/him pronouns. I'll tell you a little bit about how kind of OPD's experience with this. Initially, we were unsure kind of what this all meant and how we were going to go about it. And I think in the end, we see this as a very valuable thing. And so what we did to, what we were asked to do is get kind of a multidisciplinary, every level of our organization representatives together to be a part of this conversation from the get-go. And so we tried to do that, and I think we got some of our very best. We had some really good, high-quality conversations about the things that we're doing, the things that we could be doing better, the concerns of the community. I think what we took out of this more than anything else is this is all about communication. It really is. I think the thing that we, we took from this is that it's not that something was broken. We're doing things well. That's what I, that's what I took out of this. It's what I took from the national conference is that we're doing things well. We're not doing things perfect. And there are things that we can do better. And there are things that we can do in this community that other communities might not see value in that will continue to build and maintain the trust that we're seeking and the legitimacy that we need as a police department in order to get our work done. And so to us, that involvement from the community and hearing what it is that we can do better or building a system or being a part of building a system was the value. It was the communication. And what we found consistently during this process is that it's not, like I said, it's not that we're doing something wrong. It's that people don't know what we're doing. They don't know what the system in place is. They don't know about the auditor. They don't know about our internal review processes. They don't know about the Criminal Justice Training Commission and the certification process or the decertification process in certain circumstances or the Office of Independent Investigation. There's a broad spectrum of oversight that is already in place that was super effective to begin with. And it's how we integrate with it and how we communicate with people about it and what they need to know, what they want to know, and what they want, how they want to be a part of that and how they want to be a part of, of helping us meet expectations. And I think it's about education about, about us. It's about transparency so that people know what we're doing and they have, they feel like they have the agency and the authority to ask without being threatened or feeling threatened or making complaints to people that they choose to make complaints to rather than just to us and then, you know, fearing that, that avenue when there might be a different way that we can do this. And so I think there's a ton of things that we got out of this. But like I said, and I'll just reiterate, I think what we got out of this as an organization is a sense of two-way communication and the need for that. And it's easy to get lost in law enforcement with all of the things that we do have in place and the things that we are doing. This is a very complex profession. And trying to figure out what people want to understand about it or what they want to know and what we can tell them is a difficult thing. And so I think opening the avenue, building a system where we can have that conversation consistently is a benefit to the police department. So we look at the, the implementation of these. These are all, none of this is going to be climbing a steep hill. A lot of it, we, we are hopeful that, we have maybe a couple of bumps here or there that we're going to need to negotiate as far as implementation. But we don't see any of it as a challenge that we can't rise to meet. And we're looking forward to it. It, like I said, it will continue to build and maintain the trust that, that we need to have with the community that gives us the authority to do the policing that we need to do.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Chief. So now I'm going to give Catherine a chance to talk a little bit about the work that she did.
Thanks, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. In terms of the benchmarking, and I can talk about that. And again, I've, I've been really fortunate because I got pulled in pretty early on and got to watch the process evolve and develop and become what it was. You know, Stacy put together an incredible process plan to really consider voices from throughout the community, voices from the Police Department, voices from government, you know, voices from representatives, voices from folks who are appointed, you know, just really hearing from everyone. And that's really an important part of this process because we're not all going to agree on everything clearly that we, that's not who we are. We have differences of opinion. And what's important is to bring people together and create opportunities for sharing viewpoints. And that, that happened just over and over and over again. I was so impressed. And that included, my being impressed included working with the department. And we met with several different groups within the department, some one-on-one. And Sam in particular was very involved in the process, the chief, the other deputy chief. So that we heard from leadership from the department, but then we heard from line officers also, which was really important. And so from the standpoint of feeling like this is a process that the city of Olympia is really coming to a point where whatever you do is the best that could have been done. But I've said all along, it needs to be constantly assessed. It will go through revisions. You just expect that instead of assuming that you've found what works for Olympia right now. It might work right now, and then some incident happens in six months or two years that suddenly the community decides, you know, we want something different. And that could be all sorts of, of different things. One of the things that I did was benchmarking. And the, you've got a summary of the cities that I included within the benchmarking work for Olympia. I've worked in a number of these cities. I'm familiar with all of them, at least to some degree. And it's not any, I've done benchmarking for every other community that I've worked with. And it's not easy to do because there's so little research on oversight. So you might see, if you go to one website, it might say there are 115 oversight agencies in the United States. And you go to another one and say, well, there are 90. You go to another one and it says that there's 170, you know? I mean, so no one really knows. It's not a field that is well researched at this point. So I decided to approach it this time around by first looking at what sort of oversight is available in, here in Washington. State law is very, very important in this area of oversight. It very much dictates what an oversight agency can and can't do from an authority standpoint, totally separate from what, what, what does a community want, but just from an authority standpoint. So for example, until recently, you couldn't, nobody really could gain access to a full police officer's file even though there had been a misconduct complaint and even though it had been sustained. And there was just very, very limited transparency in California. That's changing. But that's very different than Washington State where there's a lot of transparency. So first I looked at all of the agencies in the state of Washington. And then I looked at agencies outside of Washington that I had familiarity with. And there I was very much looking for agencies that are working in communities and cultures that felt more similar to what Olympia, sort of this, the, you know, life of Olympia, the soul of Olympia in terms of the kinds of values that this community stands for. And, and picked, I think, four different, I don't remember if I ended up with three or four, but Davis, California, Eugene, Oregon, and then Cambridge, Massachusetts. And again, I've got familiarity with all of these organizations. And of, of all of the organizations that we looked at, really Davis comes closest to being similar. And it's similar both in terms of kind of the community spirit and community involvement and the kinds of values that are important. It's very similar in terms of the Police Department's involvement and sort of my experience of the department in Davis when I worked there, similar to what I experienced here. And their model, and they were doing something similar that they had an oversight system that they're wanting to leverage and make even better. And that's sort of what happened here too, is leveraging what, what you already had that was working was an important principle that came out of discussions. And so really, the system that is being set up here, that's being recommended for Olympia, if anything, it's even more developed, much more developed than where things stood when I left my work in Davis a few years back. So that's where the benchmarking, sort of the, what I was looking for, size, culture, similar kinds of values. And I'll be more than happy to answer questions when it's appropriate time. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. So they're not going anywhere. So they'll be available if we want to have, ask, ask questions or more discussion later on that piece. So, but I'm going to go ahead and move into describing the recommendations so we can kind of get to our commissioners. So, um... Okay. So we're going to next, so, okay. So just ignore that. So we talked about, you know, how we got here. So let's go ahead and move into the recommendations. So on your next slide, it shows the... Yeah, okay. On your next slide, it talks about the purpose of the recommendations. So this is the purpose that is set out in the draft recommendations that are come forward to you. So that's to build trust and legitimacy in the city of Olympia's public safety system by enhancing and maintaining the community's role to ensure police accountability and transparency. There we go. Thank you, Kelly. And I'll just outline some of the key enhancements that you'll see in the recommendations. So that includes expanding the involvement of community members, expanding the scope of what the civilian police auditor reviews and includes in their assessment and report, enhancing transparency and accessibility in the reporting of data and findings, educating the community around policing and oversight, and the ongoing assessment and refinements over time that Catherine talked about. So the graphic shown here, it's your classic Venn diagram, demonstrates that the proposed system is made up of several important and independent parts. So we have the Olympia Police Department. We have the civilian police auditor. And we have the proposed community board. So it's important that each of these maintain their independence and their independent role. And you can see outlined there, there's the role. And at the same time, it's necessary that there's a really high level of collaboration amongst the parts as well. Both pieces are necessary, independence and collaboration. So in this structure, independence for the auditor looks like being appointed and accountable directly to the city council. Independence for the board means being directly advisory to the city council. So while independent, so there's also a lot of the attributes that we talked about earlier that can be seen in the different parts of the system and how they work together with one another. So I'll just give some examples. So the auditor needs transparent access to data and information. The auditor needs support from the community board with community engagement and getting their input. The community board needs the auditor to share their expertise in recommending changes to policy, training, and operations so the board can fill their role. to policy, training, and operations, so the board can fill their role of providing a community perspective on those recommendations. And the board needs information, training, and education that OPD can provide. So it's really important, as we move forward and thinking about these recommendations, that we maintain that balance of independence and that collaboration. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over now to Genevieve, who's going to talk from a commissioner perspective about the recommendations. And, and while we had hoped to have a couple other commissioners speak to some of the recommendations, unfortunately, they were unable to make it. So I'm also going to fill in with some additional information to be able to highlight some things that commissioners wanted to highlight in terms of the recommendations before we move into our, our discussion. So, Genevieve.
Thank you, Stacy. I'm going to speak to specifically the recommendations around the community board, the composition, and also how we're intending to, or outline some ways to recruit for that community board, the kinds of characteristics or the backgrounds that we see as, as being part of that composition, and then also the training that'll go into preparing these community board members so that they can successfully serve their role. I also wanted to touch on how this community board really addresses some of those, those key purposes that Stacy outlined, that it expands the involvement of community members in this system, and it creates a way to have more direct access for community members to some of the other parts of the system, namely, the police auditor, and then also the OPD. As you saw earlier, currently, there is a community member that sits on the use-of-force board, but that really was the only kind of specific role for communities to have, direct interaction with either the police auditor or OPD. So, in this, what really resonated with all of the working groups was this idea of a independent community board that was going to be representative of different facets of the community. We really envision some representation from across the community, wanting to make sure that the community board members come from various different lived experiences, that they also bring with them also representation from different kinds of groups, either socioeconomic, cultural, ethnic groups, but also groups that maybe have barriers to certain languages or also accessibility issues, so that they can bring some of that lived experience in that advisory role that you saw in, outlined in that Venn diagram. We want to make sure that in recruiting for this board, that we go outside some of the typical channels, that we really use some of the community members that were involved in the, the working groups that we had during this process, but also go in out and engage with different community members to see who would be interested in participating in this kind of community board. We also want to make sure that these individuals come prepared to not only be willing to understand and learn about the current system, but really want to be part of success, making the system successful, that this is, they come into this role with that responsibility and, and helping to work with one another, challenge and ask questions of one another, but really to, want to work together and be collaborative in this process. One of the things that was really striking for me, too, was this idea of being able to have direct conversation engagement with the police auditor on a regular basis, not just on a one-time basis or in, in reaction to something. I think that was wonderful, because one of the things that we learned is that it is a very complex process, so being able to understand all that the police auditor has to take in, in terms of information, having that ongoing, that ongoing dialogue will build some understanding, and hopefully, in their roles back out to the community, those community members can also help provide information or context for some of the police auditor reports or processes that we know for now may seem very opaque or are difficult to understand. And then also, that idea of the community board serving as an advisory role for policy or training or hiring aspects for OPD, I think that was a wonderful aspect in the recommendations, that there'll be some feedback that they can give to OPD to see where maybe there's some gaps or misunderstanding around some of those policies. One of the key things that we want to make sure that the community board members would have would be a good foundation, training in terms of what OPD, so scope of work for OPD, but also the scope of work for the police auditor. I think coming into this working group, that was helpful for us, too, so we want to make sure that the community board members have that same kind of vocab, shared vocabulary, and also be able to ask questions, like we, if there was concerns about terminology, or even like some of the language that's currently used, if that feels problematic, it's good to have the community board members serve as sort of a sounding board to see if there's ways to maybe provide clarification, or even a different perspective or, or ways to define terminology that maybe has become so much jargonized, you know, that, that it becomes difficult for a general community member to really understand what, what's going on with OPD or the, or the police auditor's report. This goes hand in hand with, again, that idea of communications, as Deputy Chief Costello was mentioning, we want to make sure that, that this community board not only can look at the reports and look at the ways that the communication process is being outlined, outlined by the OPD, and make sure that it is something that can be accessible to the general public. We want to make sure that, we were talking about how even websites and where reports are posted, or how to contact OPD, or to issue a complaint, that wasn't as easily accessible currently, and the community board member will help advise on how we could present that differently, or even maybe help educate some of the community members and how those processes or reports are shared. So that's another key role that the community board members would, would serve, and also be able to provide some insight back to the, to OPD and the police auditor, that, that immediate feedback loop, that wouldn't, again, be reactionary, but be an ongoing thing.
Genevieve, I'm going to put your will up on the spot.
Yes.
Did you, Parfey is not with us tonight?
Oh, yes.
But he had talked about training and kind of, kinds of training. Did you want to?
So one of the things that we want, there is definitely training in terms of maybe presentations from OPD and the police auditor, but also, we talked about immersive training. So one of the things that we have done as the Social Justice Equity Commissioners is on ride-alongs with police or walk-alongs, just again, understanding the different kinds of roles that OPD undertakes, and then also having a little bit more understanding as to what training a police auditor also undertakes. So, I think that's something, what we thought was very important was, again, that those three parts of that Venn diagram, there is some shared vocabulary, and there isn't confusion about a particular aspect of oversight, that there, and that the community board can also then, you know, be able to ask questions regarding a particular aspect or sector for of OPD.
Okay. Thank you, Genevieve. So I'm going to just touch on a few other things that the commissioners felt they wanted to highlight for you, and then we can, we can, it's like a choose your own adventure, we can either talk about implementation, or we can pause and have some conversation. So either way is fine, but, okay. So I'm going to highlight a few more things. So, just in terms of the qualifications of the police auditor, commissioners wanted to note that, again, to keep in mind that the qualifications in the recommendations are in line with the expanded scope, so. And they suggest that the council should be seeking an auditor who has experience in criminal justice, you know, in auditing and law enforcement oversight, that they can have experience in evaluating complaints and use-of-force investigations, but they do so with an eye towards identifying patterns and trends, and can focus on recommendations for systemic improvements. So really focus on systems change. They also talked about the importance of having an auditor that's committed to collaborating with both the department, but in particularly the community board. So as Genevieve mentioned, there's more frequent touchpoints built into the recommendations, so we want an auditor that can really embrace working with the community board, and taking the input and the community perspective, and building that into their, their recommendations. Lastly, they talked about having an auditor that has an appreciation and a curiosity and a desire to work with community members that bring a diversity of lived experiences and perspectives, to really acknowledge and, and honor the diversity of our community, and ensure that voices, that their work and their outreach and their engagement is representative of that diversity. The other thing I'll just say is commissioners did want to highlight the importance of the regular assessment, and Catherine spoke to this earlier, but just understanding that what we're recommending today is not the end-all, be-all, but there's actually an element of the recommendations that say, continue to assess. So in one year, check in, and let's, let's look at how we're doing in terms of implementation, and then regularly thereafter, let's look at, are we meeting the outcomes that we set out to meet? What are the performance measures that we can use to understand how effective we're being, and are there changes or adaptations that we need to make along the way? So, okay. So at this time, I'm happy to either talk a little bit more about implementation, or we can pause for some conversation.
Sure. Thank you, Stacy. Why don't we go ahead and pause, because I know some of our members are probably hearing some of this for the first time. Myself, Mayor Potem Nguyen, and Councilmember Gilman already see this presentation in community livability and public safety, so I want to give our other members an opportunity to have, answer questions if you have any. Any questions? Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. You can call me Jim at study sessions, if that's okay. It feels less formal when we're down here. So just a couple of questions. First of all, thank you for being on the cutting edge, like, the fact that it's hard to compare ourselves with others means we're inventing in real time, and being able to do the right thing for Olympia right now with everybody as a partner, and not reacting to some big thing is, is significant to me, and I appreciate that. I, I also have a great appreciation for your willingness to just go and get on the streets with OPD and see what they do, because that's really the best way, like, get behind the scenes and learning how the decisions are made to deploy resources and, and, and meeting the people who are largely Olympians is, is pretty exciting to me that you built that relationship. In fact, my biggest concern in all of this is that the Social Justice and Equity Commission will have to work to maintain as strong of a relationship as it's had with OPD in the last few months in the future, because you won't have the, as, as, as a mission that you're working on as, as strongly, at least for the time being. One question is, how, if at all, does this relate or interface with our current Civil Service Commission?
So, I guess how it would relate is, as you know, your Civil Service Commission has responsibility with hiring and making sure that we're hiring officers and we're getting the kind of officers that we want, and that's a piece of the work that they do. And so, I think that as this continues to move forward, finding ways to integrate the training and other things that's coming out of this, and making sure that the commission is up to speed on expectations around oversight and all the connection pieces will be really important. So, there's, there's a link there, but I'm not, I'm not sure if I got at your exact question or not.
Well, no, I think that's the right, what I was hoping for, and the question that comes to that for me is, did we consider having overlap between the community board and the Civil Service Commission? Because to me, it feels like a natural opportunity to not have two bodies.
You, you won't see that shown in the implementation pieces that I'm going to show, bring up next, but that doesn't mean we can't continue to have the conversation about it.
Okay. Yeah, because I think everything you're talking about is related to hiring really good people so that we get great outcomes. And, and I just think that if there's, if the law allows it, there should be the Civil Service Commission component of the community oversight board. And I, I hope that we can move in that direction.
Yeah.
So, I think this is a good piece of feedback here, and I'm, there may be kind of where we start and where we finish, right? So you've got a set of recommendations that are in front of you for how we start this, and I think engaging maybe the Civil Service Commission in some conversation around this, and maybe over time, the board gets expanded, and maybe there's a Civil Service Commission member that sits on the board with them. So I think there's lots of opportunities here to continue that dialogue and conversation, and, and keep this kind of conversation alive.
Thank you, both. Before we move on, Councilmember Cooper, there is a reason I'm referring to your names formally, but that's a sidebar conversation we can have later. Councilmember Partially.
That was a great thought process. I hadn't even, that's why I like seven people, we, and community work groups, because everybody provides a piece of the whole. So thank you. I hadn't thought about that, but it is going to impact the Civil Service Board and who we're hiring, and the type of people we're looking, the work of this group, and the social justice and equity. And that, in that way, we can impact the future force, sometimes a little more directly. My, my question is, I read through this about the police auditor. By the way, I commend expanding what we're doing with the auditor. We can leverage a lot more, sort of like the Housing Authority, we could do a lot more with that than we are. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate bringing all the, the, I guess it's a Venn diagram of all the interactive groups. But mine was, you know, open communication, I saw this in multiple times in the qualification for the auditor, but what about communication skills? Because they're going to be part of our outward communication, because transparency is part being, allowing yourself to be open to the community, be looked at, but it's also part how you communicate it to the community. Communication becomes critical, and so I would love to see that as an attribute, that the auditor is really good at communicating effectively, and not using all the acronyms and the multiple-syllable words that the average person won't know.
Yes, thank you. And I believe you alluded to that earlier, when you said that the board would sort of serve in a role like that when it comes to public communication. Is that correct? Yeah.
Yeah, so, so we anticipate communication from coming on a lot of different fronts. So, but yes, absolutely. We, you know, we're going to be seeking a, a person in the civilian police auditor role that is, wants to engage with community, wants to share their findings in a way that's can be easily understood, wants to be trusted by the community as independent, that someone can submit a complaint directly to them, and that they're accessible. And so, yes, absolutely, all of that means good communication.
And respectfully, I agree with you, Mayor. We should be making sure the community work group has a handle on the communication, but we also don't want to be the pinch point in communication. We need to be able to make sure OPD and the auditor are equally communicating out so that it's transparent on every part of that Venn diagram. The only way that's going to happen is each part of that Venn diagram is effective in communicating.
Any other questions? Councilmember Vanderpool.
Yeah, I think one of the most valuable parts of this that really sticks out is the regular assessment, the continued yearly process. You know, in, in very, in short terms, could you give us an example of how that will look yearly, how much time will be used on that, what, how depthy do you think possibly continued process would look like?
Okay. I'll, so, my short answer is that I would be creating something on the fly, if I told you I knew what it would look like right now. So, the, the real answer is that that is part of the implementation, we recognize there's more work to do to, to investigate or evaluate what that would look like. So, but what I can say is that we've got some parts of the recommendations that already describe what regular assessment can look like, and that what's key there is that there's assessment on the part of the council in terms of how the auditor's doing, there's assessment on the part of the board in terms of reporting regularly on how the auditor's meeting the expectations for how they'll interact with the board. There's an annual opportunity for the auditor to weigh in on OPD, or excuse me, OPD's work planned, or anticipated policy changes. So I think there's a number of different levers, but in terms of what, what a process for an annual assessment would look like, you know, remains to be, we still need to develop that piece, if that helps.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. We'll turn it back over to you, Stacy.
So I would like just to take a moment to offer, do any of our other, is there, would any of our other commissioners like to share anything in terms of the recommendations that resonated for them, or respond to any of the questions that have been raised?
I think we are good. You have answered most of the questions.
Okay. All right. We'll, we'll come back in a few minutes if there's anything else that you'd like to share. Okay. So, so let's talk a little bit about what, what we know in terms of implementation at this point. So, and I'll just preface by saying there's more work to do here. But, so one of the pieces you'll see in your packet and what will come forward to you for formal action- for formal action is what we have called implementation considerations. So throughout this process, we've had conversations around policy, and those have been excellent. And then we've had a lot of rich conversation around what a policy would look like when it's implemented. So, you know, understanding that as part of this process, it's really important in terms of our conversations with commissioners and community participants. So we try to understand what this would look like when put into practice. So what we've done to try to scratch that itch a little bit is identify what we call implementation considerations. So these are things that are intended to really be guidance in terms of, you know, when we move forward to think about implementation, those procedures and processes, you know, what do we need to be taking into account that we heard throughout the process? So that is in your packet for you to kind of take a look at as well. Yes, please, Genevieve.
So I just wanted to clarify. Again, I really appreciated the process of all that Stacy outlined for this, where we had our own individual groups meet and then we would occasionally come together to do some of that kind of cross-pollination and questioning. So I wanted you to know that these implement considerations came out of those, those groups where we were mixing together, where the tables were a mix of OPD, community members, and social justice and equity commissioners. So some of the things that you're hearing here are some questions that were directly raised from either a community member or a social justice commissioner or even OPD staff. So, so know that these aren't just something that, you know, that just came out of, you know, a secluded conversation, but it really was part of that dynamic, kind of workshopping and kind of pushing and pulling on these recommendations, so.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Okay. So, in terms of city support and staffing, so we know that we've talked a bit about expanding the role of the auditor. So as you, you know, some of the things that we've touched on that that would be including is that the expectation that the auditor is developing, I'm looking at Catherine to bump me in case I get anything, an annual work plan, that the auditor will be able to intake and continue to audit complaints and use of force investigations. The auditor would have a role in reviewing OPD policies and training, and also that engagement with the community board. So that's the expanded scope than what we have right now. So, the, in addition, in terms of city staffing support, so there is, in the implementation plan, a program specialist and staff liaison. It'd be a full-time employee housed in the city manager's office that would really support liaisoning to the community board to ensure they have what they need to be successful, supporting, collaborating with the auditor and OPD. So ensuring that that communication and collaboration is functioning and going well, can assist with the public engagement and communication, and also is there to work with OPD on data analytics and visualization. So in terms of just getting out more reporting, more data, which leads to greater transparency. So that's kind of what the staffing piece would look like. In terms of timing, this is a, again, proposed kind of timeline for what implementation would look like. So right now, you're slated to have the recommendations come forward to you for formal consideration and action on July 9th. So assuming you move forward with approval, really the remainder of the year would be dedicated to updating the code, to bringing onboard the needed staffing support that we talked about, and then kind of really starting to dial in those processes and procedures. And as the W Chief mentioned too, there's some work to do, some communication and work to do with, with OPD staff as well in terms of what that looks like. So recruitment for the community board towards the later part of the year, and then launching a new RFP for a civilian police auditor that's in alignment with the recommendations in 2025 as well. So the next part is just move into kind of wrapping up and some, like, acknowledgements and kind of experiences. So I just want to pause and just ask if there's any more kind of questions or comments that are coming up.
Councilmember Partial.
I have two, so I can pause and let my other councilmates ask their questions too, if that will be helpful. My first one is, because I can't help myself, being the Chair of Finance, I saw in their statement, ongoing revenue support. Is this being built into some of our budget sustainability? Because I want to make sure, I know we passed the public safety, is it going to be all covered by that? Are we going to be making sure that line item is in there? Because I agree with that statement.
Yes, thank you for that. The proposal that I'll be bringing forward as part of the 2025 budget is that the support positions that's proposed here are covered using the Prop 1 funds that we have. So we've done a pretty deep dive there and looking at what we think the estimated revenues will be from, from Prop 1. And there's enough there to cover both the chief's staffing and other needs that he's, that he's shared with you and funding to cover this position.
And some miscellaneous, in case there's like communication tools or something else you need?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we've been conservative in our estimates for what we need for staff support. I know that Assistant City Manager Sullivan spent some time to make sure she's conservative in her approach of what her ask was, to make sure we could cover all those things.
Okay. Mayor, would you like me to ask mine later? I can, okay. I don't know if this is something we need to worry about, but I'm wondering for the auditor, if we do also kind of an RFQ, kind of marry the two instead of just an RFP, just so we get a little more dialogue going before we actually settle down on two or three, that we want to seriously look at.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Appreciate that input, yeah.
Councilmember Gilman, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I, I just, I want to call out that I see this effort as, as serving our continuing to keep working on reimagining public safety more broadly. And so while I acknowledge how important, you know, better communicating of what we already do, and I think we can rightfully be proud of the internal reviews that we already have, that having both this community board and an enhanced auditor position, be able to look for patterns and trends and identify paths for systemic change is super important to me. Because, you know, while we talked about our use of force rate being very low, like 1.4% of arrests, that's still 44 times last year that we used violence, either to intervene in violence or to gain compliance. And each of those incidents has a risk of creating serious harm or death to somebody. So that, that makes all of this especially important for me, that we're, we're both doing oversight, although I have great confidence in our, our police department staff and our officers. So I don't, I don't feel like we're looking for officers who are dragging people out of car windows. That's not the situation here. But I think that we do have room to, to use these tools to help find less frequent and less violent uses of force or coercion to gain compliance. And I'm, so I'm grateful for the effort, and I just wanted to call out that part of it is communication and refining it. But it's also, we still have a big project because we really don't want to have people, officers or individuals who are being arrested, being maimed or dying in the, in the course of policing the city. So I just, I just wanted to call that out and to be really, really grateful for the work that your commission and this board that came together, and the staff, and especially that the police department staff worked both so willingly and so hard on this effort. I appreciate that very much.
Well said. Councilmember Cooper, followed by Councilmember Madron.
Thank you. So Councilmember Partially's question made me want to add a follow-up. In the benchmarking, I noticed that there were several cities where it was hard to find a call out in their budget. So I just wanted to suggest that we call out oversight in our budget really clearly so future historians or future researchers can gather a better picture. And then I'm just, thinking about this at the, at the really high level, I think we're putting in place a really good preventative measure for the future, like, to keep our police department from being, coming the ones that we're afraid of, that we hear of in the news so often. You know, I made the comment earlier, I really feel like every officer I've ever worked with is, is an Olympian. Like, they carry our values, they want to do the right thing, and, and they want to represent that with the community every single day. And they all understand there's opportunity, and how can they work themselves, themselves out of a job so that we don't have to be in a place where we get into interactions with people that might involve use of force? But I'm reminded by the, reminded of the recent auditor report where I believe they said that no guns were pulled by Olympia Police Department last year. To me, that is significant. And sometimes that might mean that other ways of force need to be used to apprehend somebody who's doing the wrong thing and deserves to be apprehended. And so I, I think that this strikes a fine balance. But I want to just throw one other thing out here, because to me, this is moving upstream and preventing. And the thing that we're missing in our community that we used to have is an SRO program that made a relationship between young people and police officers from an early age so that they can have a trust built and a sense of community together. And so I'd like us to try to figure out how to bring back, and, and I know the council has talked about reinventing school resource officer, but, so maybe that's not it, but a much more strong interaction and relationship with our young people. In fact, I was sitting here thinking about the first time I met you, when we were talking about gang activity on the West Side at Evergreen Village's apartment complex, and just how much things have changed yet they're still the same. And, but those interactions with the kids in the community center were sometimes the best intelligence we had about big crime rings or other things that were happening in our community. And I just want to, like, lift up the, the need to have that kind of strong relationship with our young people and our police and all of our public servants, honestly. So thank you for what you do, and thank you all for pulling this together.
It's a great point. The conversation did go a little bit quiet, and it certainly will be back the moment something happens. So we should certainly continue that conversation around school resource officers. Councilmember Madron.
I just want to chime in on the gratitude for all the people who have worked on this, Social Justice and Equity Commission members and the community work group and staff and Catherine, yourself. This work is a long time coming. You know, we were having conversations in 2020 about civilian oversight, and it was one of the reasons that we formed the Social Justice and Equity Commission was to really wrap our arms around this. So, so thank you for working really hard and embracing this work. And, you know, we've talked a lot about how remarkable our police department is and how, you know, they're really on the, the leading edge of progressive policing and every, and, and all of that is great. And Olympia is growing, and people are coming from all communities all over the country. And they haven't had those same experiences with police. So that's another reason that it's really important that we do this work, so that as people are coming from other communities, they can see the transparency, they can see how we're different here. So I wanted to name that. And I do have a question too. You know, in terms of recruiting for another, a police auditor, and Catherine, this might, you might be the best suited to answer this, but I remember when we recruited for the person we currently have, we didn't get very many applicants. So I'm curious, like, you know, what does the market look like for somebody who can, is interested and can do this, this scope of work that we've set out?
Thanks, Councilmember. That's a great question, and it's something that we've been tossing around. I had some suggestions that I've already passed on around some recruitment markets to reach out to, very specialized kind of markets that would be helpful, along with some, you know, personal folks I know around the country who might be interested in this kind of thing. But it is, in terms of just availability, it's like everything else. There's a whole range of folks who have been doing this work for a while, who are starting to cycle out, just having done it for a lot of years and getting older like me. And, you know, it's just, it's, so there's a, a group of us that are kind of starting to ratchet down some of our work. On the other hand, the good news is, there's a whole group of folks who have been filling lots of different roles, maybe not as a police auditor, but, you know, with support roles in different agencies. And you have places like Seattle, which is very, very different, and we could have a, you know, long talk about it, but it's, the Seattle Office of Professional Accountability has a very large staff, as does the independent auditor. And so you've got folks that are in support roles who are really learning this kind of skills that are necessary for doing this kind of work. And so they, and, and some of them are even very specialized. So I'm hopeful. I mean, I think, you know, I think with, you know, a good recruitment plan and strategy and a lot of what, you know, has been discussed, I'm, I'm hopeful that you're going to find a person that's going to fit.
Great. That's really, I'm really glad to hear that. We've had a very similar conversation around our other council-appointed role of the hearings examiner, where our hearings examiner is, you know, going to retire soon, and we didn't get a lot of applicants last time we put out for it. And I know there's some mentorship happening in that field, and so it sounds like same for the work of police auditing. So I'm really glad to hear that. Thank you.
Mayor Potem Nguyen.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I really appreciate the opportunities I've had to sit in on some of the, this work being done. And, and then also, of course, you all bringing it to the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee, just on the 22nd of last month, where there was, you know, really, really serious conversation on a really serious matter here we have before us, and a lot of care, some tears, some smile, and, and even some, some sort of giggles as we try to, as we try to shake off our many emotions that comes with something that's a long time coming, right? Something that is this big and this great, and I'd probably be remiss if I didn't speak up every time and just extend gratitude for not only the commission, all staff that are involved, the community oversight of law enforcement folks. And then also, we have community members that are actually in the audience today. I'm not sure if they would appreciate me naming them or not, but that have been very, following very closely and, and truly engaged. And I'm certain they have much to do, like all of us, and takes the time to really analyze and pay attention to our processes, and giving us feedback when they feel we need to pivot. And, you know, and, and we haven't always implemented everything. Though it has been really good feedback on, on all sides, and I've appreciated watching this process kind of move and bend and be flexible. And that brings us here tonight to your, I think it's the last recommendation, is to continue being iterative, right, in the process. And so we hear folks, I think all council members so far, kind of sharing a lot of gratitude, asking some clarifying questions and saying, hey, we recognize this has been a lot of work, and it's been a long time coming, and please don't stop, right? Because there's so much good happening, especially after the implementation of these recommendations. And I guess I'll just say, in case it hasn't been obvious, thank you so much. Thank you so much for spending the time to come here. And whether you spoke a lot or not, we know that you've been engaged in the process, and you, and you've surely had, had a hand in this. And this is going to be so remarkable for our community, all those involved in the public safety process, certainly those that are the most vulnerable, to those in positions of power, being able to, to balance that and making sure there's, there's, there's checks and balances, right? And also, for commissioners, you've had to sit through so many processes, so many, so many times where we've asked, what did you think? What do you think about this? How do you want this to go? And I really hope that as this process has moved along, that you're really seeing your impact in it, and just the imprint of your work. I know that you'll be coming back, or maybe different members of the commission, when this comes formally before council. But anyways, really, really appreciate your time. I guess it gets shorter every day, and you chose to spend it here. So I really appreciate that. that. I really trust this process and I look forward to, to the evening that we, we can pass these recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pashley.
I, I actually was, I was sitting here waiting after the lovely words of our mayor Protem, thinking, I, I really know that I don't need to ask this, but I'm going to ask it partly because you've heard our gratitude and it's huge. We are going to have the work group as many as we can when this comes back to full council so we can shower the whole Social Justice and Equity Commission and the work group, you know, with our gratitude so they can hear it. Because I remember when the one community plan came forward, me as a city council member, the most fun night was being able to thank this group of people that worked for our community and worked hard to bring forward a plan that was from our community. And we were voting on something the staff didn't create, something we didn't create, but our community brought to us. And that was a joyful moment and I'm hoping we can bring that group forward on that evening. And I, knowing you two, and Jay, that will be a, a no-brainer, so to speak. One last thing, on the auditor Protem going to succession planning, it'd be great if we ever need to have someone like that, that we start inducing, almost like an apprenticeship program, like a mentorship program so that we're not stuck like the hearings examiner.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mayor Protem Wen.
Oh, I, I guess for what it's worth, just kind of what you said, councilmember Pashley, at the end there, kind of just sparked something in me. My understanding is that going forward, we, we don't know who, who the next auditor is going to be, of course, but we are looking at trying to find a firm that has the capacity, you know, because, you know, even if they don't leave us, people get sick, things happen, that sort of thing. And so maybe a little bit more capacity than we have currently.
Hence an RFQ process instead of RFP.
Well, thank you all. I do have one question. Stacy, just in regards to the FTE that's on your previous slide. So, it says that, you know, they're there to recruit, hire and onboard, but can you just maybe paint a little bit of a picture of what are they doing after that's taken place?
Oh, are you, are you asking about?
The new program specialist?
The new program specialist? Yes. Yeah, absolutely. So, so right now, the Community Use of Force Board, the staff liaison is Lieutenant Dan Smith in the OPD. So, what we would need for a community board is a staff liaison based out of the city manager's office. So, that, that would be one of their main roles would be to support to, you know, onboard, support kind of our new community board members. Am I going down the right path in responding to your question?
Sort of. So, I want to know what they're doing after all of that has taken place.
Oh, okay.
Yes, after the onboarding, the recruiting.
After the community boards onboard?
Yes.
Okay. That's why I paused. I was like, hmm, that doesn't look like. So, there's, so there's, yeah. So, now there's still an opportunity to help with this, with supporting the auditor. So, we can bring on an auditor with the expanded contract, but we may have an auditor that needs areas where they need support or maybe where they need growth, you know, in terms of support with communication. Oh, did you? Okay.
I just let you know.
Oh, I was like, I'm getting too many signals, Jay. Okay. So, um, talk on it. Communicate, support with communication, with doing kind of the outreach. One of the things that we talked about was really ensuring that we're communicating and outreach to audiences and like justice impacted individuals and folks that we haven't normally outreach to in the past. So, that, that goes above and beyond what an auditor can do. And so there's kind of that day-to-day work of, of supporting that system, that Venn diagram that you saw. And also I do really view this as an opportunity to support the education outreach on behalf of OPD. So, there's a real need there to be able to talk about this, how the systems work. Are you, are you?
I don't give you any answers.
Are you emphatically agreeing or are you saying, like, give me the mic?
I'm reiterating what, what, what you're saying and, and what Assistant City Manager Sullivan and I discussed was some day-to-day sort of mining of data and, and the communication related to data and the sharing of it and that sort of thing. And so if we're talking about a dashboard or we're talking about something that's going to need ongoing maintenance, I think there's, there's a desire to have that independent of the police department so that they have a way to get the data from us and then put it out in a way that, that is impartial and, and easy for people to digest and then they have a point of contact if they want. And that's an ongoing day-to-day management thing if we're going to do the dashboard and sort of make an impact for people.
And that's exactly, I was going to point to that recommendation specifically while the, the information and data points themselves would come, would generate, would be generated by OPD for a, a communication dashboard on the OPD website. It would be the, the FTE would be kind of that, kind of that, that counterpoint of be able to kind of be able to filter that through the community's eyes, making sure that it is, it's accessible and also that the, the language again is there's no barrier in terms of understanding what is being presented. And also being able to outreach and then share with different community groups or be able to make sure that community groups are aware of if there are changes or new reports or clarification of process and policy.
That definitely answers the question. Thank you very much. You know, along those lines, you know, it just has me sort of thinking about how we, we think about having additional staff, city staff, but also, you know, we've heard things like, oh, another board or commission that the city is going to have, right? And I think after, you know, tonight, if you've been paying attention, you can clearly see that there is, there is a lane here as to why this, this work is so important and, and why we need this body to be partners with us in doing this work. We do see so many other communities across the country since the death of George Floyd, they've committed themselves to doing this work and then we see some of those same communities going backwards. And so I'm really proud of our community for still pushing forward despite the calls to maybe not do this work. There's a lot of other colorful ways to say that, but I won't. You know, I think that there is, Mayor Protem spoke to it earlier, there in the room when we had approved the recommendations to come for tonight's study session, there was a lot of tears of just joy and emotion, just different emotions around the fact that this is very human-centered work. There are so many people in our community that wanted to be part of the Social Justice and Equity Commission, which I believe was called something else, like the Human Rights Commissioner or something at the time, that they wanted to be part of that body because they wanted to do this work. And so now we're here seeing, seeing this and I'm just really grateful to our community members, to our, our staff, to all of our Social Justice and Equity Commissioners who have really taken the time to flush this out for us. And I also want to acknowledge that you're doing it in additional to a lot of other things that are also on your work plan. You're not only doing this. And so I think that's important to call out because maybe, I think maybe some folks who are maybe just paying attention will think you'll dissolve after this work is done or something, but you certainly will not. You'll be there along the way, helping us with implementation and, and certainly I imagine your last recommendation about ongoing efforts in evaluation, I certainly think you'll be part of that work as well. And so I want to say thank you in advance for that too. So, yeah, I very much look forward to July 9th and councilmember Pashley, that's a great suggestion, to have as many folks as we can here for that evening.
Thank you. So, before we move towards wrap-up, mayor, if I may just give our commissioners another opportunity, if anyone would like to share, and also deputy chief and chief Allen, who's here, if either of them would like to add anything else tonight before we move towards wrap-up.
I just wanted to, again, say thank you to staff for really making this a wonderful process and just again, to OPD also, I thought, I, my biggest takeaway was in the, the combined groups. I hope that we have the same sense of hope and, and, and safety. We feel, we felt, I felt so safe in those spaces to share concerns and questions and, and also ask about, you know, from, from the other people's experiences, what they want out of this process. And I hope that the community board's relationship with OPD and the police auditor feels equally safe and hopeful and collaborative. So, just wanted to say again that it was a great process and hopefully we modeled what we, what we're recommending. So, thank you again and I know that my, some of the commissioners that participated, again, you know, with, it was different kinds of personalities in the room, but we all came together in that space. So.
Thank you very much. I am new to this commission, so I think I came in the very last, so this was the very first time or probably I think one more meeting. This is an excellent work that has been done. I am so proud of the commission and the city hall for doing this because this is the sort of the work that I learned from Los Angeles Police Department and the city hall in Los Angeles where I come from. So, I think what we have achieved through our commission and Olympia Police Department, this was very necessary and the communication is the key forward between the community members, the diverse groups we live in. I think we can achieve so much from this. I also would like to mention, councilmember Cooper have raised an excellent point of involving the youth. It is very, very important to have that youth group involved with the Los, Olympia Police Department. This is also a sort of the, sort of work that we did because there are a lot, there were lots of young groups from 15 to 18 who were involved in gangs and we got them out of the gangs, we put them in the shelters, not that they were like spying on us, but they gave us the perspective, the ideas, what's happening around us and that's how we went about. And we conducted around 20 sessions between 20 young students, Olympia, I mean Olympia Police Department, for example, and our commission. So, I think that's, that's, that, that idea is actually excellent. We should definitely work on it as well. And thank you very much and I'm so proud to be part of this commission.
I just wanted to call out the, the idea that this is proactive for the city of Olympia. It's been mentioned before and not reactive, but it does two things. It sets a precedence for future residents, as was mentioned, that these, this is our priority. This is the way business is conducted in law enforcement in the city of Olympia. But going back to councilmember Cooper's suggestion that this, this be noted in the budget, it also, our success here can be researched and exported to fit other communities. So, while we are doing this for the city of Olympia, we're laying the groundwork for many other communities to build upon the success here. Thank you.
I want to say just thank you to the commission for having me as part of our commission. And I've never been part of such a big movement or step before, so it's really an honor for me to be with amazing people. And I want to thank the OPD for having the opportunity for the ride-along, for the walk-along, which was very interesting and I would be very happy to do another ride-along when the opportunity comes. Yeah. And I cannot pass by saying thank you to Stacy Ray, who's been such an amazing coordinator with all our meetings and making the clarity so obvious of what we are doing. I'm so confused between all these, you know, professional terms and all the things we've had to deal with, but she's just put it all in a nutshell and gone process after process so efficiently. It's, yeah, it's amazing and I'm really feeling like we've gotten to the bottom of this. So, thank you very much.
Yes.
And do headfirst right into it and, and knock it out of the park as, as always. So, thank you for that. Often at city council during public comment, we hear community members say nothing about us without us. And that was definitely the sentiment here. We, we were included from the very beginning, we were included in all the conversations, all the work groups, and I just appreciate that. So, thank you to Stacy and Catherine for, for making sure that happened. The biggest win, the biggest thing I'm excited about is just the overall increased community involvement in our department. Increased community involvement leads to more communication, leads to more understanding, leads to more relationship building, leads to increased trust. And, and that's really the, the foundation of how we do our job is, is having the community trust us. So, just a lot of appreciation. This is a great work product that everyone came up with and we're excited to get it going. So, thank you.
City manager Bernie.
Thank you. I just want to give one more recognition to the person who's not here tonight, Debbie Sullivan. Debbie, all the way back to the founding members work group that helped create the Social Justice and Equity Commission, Debbie's been involved in this work. She helped with the creation of that group. She's been heavily involved here. As a city manager, I'm blessed to have two really good assistant city managers because I can't be everywhere. And they represent all of us very, very well and Debbie most certainly represents the city manager's office very, very well. So, I just want to give Debbie a shout-out for her work here too and helping guide and bring this, all, all this home.
Any other comments, questions? All right. Well, that's it. Thank you very much. We'll see you on July 9th. All right. So, at, before we move on to our next agenda item, I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. It is now 7:27.
Okay, so we will move on to our second item of business for this evening, which is the discussion on the Capitol Mall Triangle SubArea Plan. And I'll turn it over to David Ginter, our senior planner, to kick our presentation off this evening.
Thank you. Glad to be here tonight. Briefing and discussion item on the Capitol Mall Triangle. It's been advanced on first slide, just like it sounded, centered around the Capitol Mall and roughly bordered by Blackwood Boulevard at Cooper Point. And then it's about a block or so north of Harrison, following the high-density zone district boundaries there, staying out of the low-density residential areas. And we've got a lot of guidance. We're drawing from a number of plans and we do have some good information and other plans that are feeding into this as well, especially the, the city's adopted comprehensive plan. That one gives us the most guidance on what we're doing here with this plan. To give you a little background and those in the audience in the community watching, city of Olympia comprehensive plan is updated every 10 years. It was started, the last major update was started in 2009 and took almost five years to do. It's a very thorough update, 2,000, more than 2,000 public comments. So, the community did get ample opportunities to get their input and the plan really reflects that. It's a great, great plan. You don't see too many comprehensive plans that are of this quality and there were many public meetings for it. So, the reason I'm telling you this, I'm, I'm, want you to know that that plan and the guidance in it was very well vetted by the community. What that plan did, established three areas to focus high-density development in downtown, the Martin Way Pacific area and the Capitol Mall area. And those are highlighted or rather designated, you can see them with the, the, the dark angled lines, I can, I think that's called hatching, not crosshatching, but hatching. Okay, the, here's a quote from the comprehensive plan and basically it says you should do master planning, which is another term for subarea planning, in these areas. is another term for subarea planning, in these areas and address the land use, infrastructure and design for these areas. Um, another quote, I promise this is the last one. Um, this one's very specific to the Capitol Mall area and it says, the vision, or rather, the, the city envisions that this area will eventually transform into a complete urban neighborhood. Um, and that's what this whole plan is about. How, how can we get there? How come it hasn't gotten there yet? What can we do? Uh, with this project, it does have two primary goals. One of them is to facilitate that vision that was just in the, in the, uh, previous quote, uh, high-density residential and mixed-use development. The other one, this area is an economic driver for the city. It's very important to maintain that, continue to support the businesses in the area. This project does have three main components to it. Um, we're working on the subarea plan tonight. Uh, it, the, we also did an environmental impact statement for this. That was a requirement of the grant that funded this project. That one was completed earlier this year. It did go through a public process over the last year and a half, and the final one was issued in, um, early spring of this year. And following this, we will have what's called a planned action ordinance. That'll contain the mitigation measures specified in the, in the environmental impact statement and any of the implementation action items that we, that we can, that are, um, the high priority implementation actions that are recommended in the subarea plan. This gives you a little bit of a timeline as to where we're at. At the end of 2021 is when the grant was awarded from the Department of Commerce. Uh, the following year, 2022, we had the consultant team on board and they started working on the documents for this, the background materials such as existing conditions report, the market analysis. That fed into the draft environmental impact statement and the draft subarea plan. We had a public process all the way through this. And then we're at the point where a final environmental impact statement was issued, uh, a couple of months ago. And the, the subarea plan is what we're looking at tonight. And following would be the planned action ordinance. Um, for community outreach for this, I did keep track and I, there is a document in the packet tonight that does, I think it's titled Public Outreach. Um, I did total up how much, um, how much outreach we did for this. So almost thirty thousand emails. We have a dedicated email list. We've been using the e-news as well. Um, we did a massive mailing at the beginning to all of the apartment complexes to the west, every property owner and every site address within and near the area. Uh, so big thanks to our support staff. They did an excellent job with that. Really glad that they're there to help us out. Um, and then we've got newspaper and social media coming through, uh, coming through, excuse me, our, our city staff working on that as well. So trying all methods to get out to the community and make sure everybody knows what's going on. Uh, for the opportunities for community, um, participation, we had five major community meetings. Um, we, we assembled a stakeholder work group that, that represented a broad range of interest in this, everything from residents to business groups, business owners, and, uh, even, even the library. I won't go over the whole list. We had fourteen members on it, broad range. And then I was invited to a significant number of organizations, everything from Lions Club to Olympia Master Builders, um, Kiwanis, uh, West Olympia Business Association, uh, list goes on, but the organizations invited me to come and give them briefings on what was going on with this. And that was great. I was able to get feedback at all of those meetings and really, really see what the community interests were for specific, specific portions of the community. Uh, we did have quite a few briefings at city committees. Uh, when I added that up, I was surprised I'd been to planning commission, um, bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee. Uh, the, it was quite a few. Um, council's been briefed a couple of times on this as well. So, and then the consultant team, as well as myself, did outreach, uh, a number of business owners, property owners. And we did meet with the mall a number of times as well to make sure, because they're, they're right at the center of this. They own the most property in the area. So we did conduct interviews and meetings with them as well. Um, so we got out in the community. We got out in the sub area as much as possible. As a result of that, we got a lot of public input at these meetings verbally and three hundred written comments. So we've, we've received a lot of community input. What we got from that input, to boil it down into just what can fit on this page is very difficult, but, uh, people want to be able to move throughout the area easily and safely with all modes of transportation. Uh, they would like to see a, an urban neighborhood that is complete and compact. Um, and then they want to make sure the environment is respected when the area develops. Uh, much of the area was developed, uh, quite a while ago and it had different priorities at that time in regards to the environment. So as new development occurs, the community wanted to make sure that we do honor the environment, make sure that, uh, um, we're not making the same mistakes of the past. Okay. Um, I'm gonna go over some of the subarea plan recommendations. And there are a lot in there. I tried to grab the biggest and most obvious ones. Um, right at the front for the land use section, uh, the recommendation is to have a center area where you focus the public space, public investment and streetscapes. So you have a focal point for the area. There would be up to three additional ones, location to be determined, and those would be slightly smaller ones. And what we're talking about is, uh, public plaza, maybe a, a park of some sort, uh, and as mentioned, streetscapes, maybe special kinds of stormwater facilities that can be integrated into other, other, uh, streetscapes and all sorts of things along those lines. Uh, so that's the main and main recommendations from the land use plan. There's a lot more, but those are the biggest ones. Um, we have a few other ones, especially in regards to when we get to, uh, development regulations. There's been a lot of talk about commercial parking. And to give you an example, the mall has quite a few parking spaces, but according to our current code, if they take away any, they would be below the minimum required for their use there. And they're not actually using all those spaces all the time. Um, so some changes might be advantageous to allow, uh, flexibility for future redevelopment of sites. Uh, the, there is recommendations in the packet regarding, uh, discussions at Land Use and Environment Committee, as well as Planning Commission regarding commercial parking and the minimums for those. Uh, building heights, um, those are recommended to be increased, especially in the core area. Uh, we do have some affordable housing height bonus specifically for the core area. Um, and then, uh, design guidelines would need to be amended as well to really address the, the new intent or the, really get in line with the vision for the area to be more pedestrian and neighborhood, more of an urban neighborhood. The, some of the design guidelines we have in the code right now are really written just for commercial. They don't really address residential development. And lastly, uh, Harrison Avenue came out as a really unique, um, area within the subarea. It has a lot of small local businesses and older buildings and existing, uh, smaller lots as well. We thought that that warranted having an extra or a, an additional study on that, a corridor study specifically for that area, which could address, um, it, it, it's almost like a miniature subarea plan. It would address a similar range of subjects, but really be focused on a much smaller area, which is a, a unique area within this, this, this larger subarea. Onto the transportation. Um, there's a whole chapter in the plan specifically for cha- transportation recommendations. This is a very busy map here. Um, it, you can look at a better version in the plan or a, or, you can see in the plan that the, the map is much more easily read in there as compared on this slide, but there are a lot of recommendations and there is a lot on this map. Uh, those include, uh, future enhanced crosswalks, a new, uh, low-stress bike network, especially, uh, Fourth Avenue, I think is highlighted for that. And you have a couple of other, other areas as well. Um, transit coordination, I do have a slide on that in a little bit, talking about, um, coordinating with intercity transit on their planning efforts in this area and possible, and what their future holds. Um, roundabouts. Um, there's a couple of them that are already planned in the area, but there's a few others that are suggested. And the corridor studies, I mentioned one, the Harrison Avenue. And the other one would be Black Lake Boulevard, which, uh, really is a different kind of, uh, arterial, or maybe I, I need to be careful with, uh, with saying, I'm, that's not my area of expertise, transportation. It's a very busy, it's a very busy street and it really warrants its own study for that area. Um, one of the things you might see in the background of this is small dashed lines crisscrossing the area. And those would represent the connections through the area which do not exist. And I've got a slide that really shows you the difference. Um, this was created by our trans, senior planner in transportation, Michelle Swanson. Um, these maps are at the same scale. I'll show you the next one in a second. These are the public, public streets within the Capitol Mall Triangle. And at the same scale, here is downtown Olympia. Uh, so you can see the, there is a significant difference in how you can get around what your, what your routes can be. And now from these, you can really start to see why it's so crowded on just a few roads out in the area. Back to those dashed lines, keep in mind, these are very roughly. They're not exact and we're not, uh, proposing to go through any buildings or anything like that. Um, as development occurs, uh, new streets do have to be put in, new connections, and that's in our existing code. Uh, this, what this does is gives a, a, a really good guide as to what kind of a network that we need out there. And these are the essential, um, streets. There are, um, excuse me, these are complete streets in regards to sidewalks, street trees, bike lanes. And here's an example. This is not a four-lane roadway here. Those are two parking lanes and two drivelines in the middle. Um, and you can see the planner strips, bike lanes. This is an example of what a typical street cross-section would look like. I did mention I'd get back to intercity transit. Um, along with that corridor study, intercity transit would be involved with that and be looking at signal prioritization on Harrison. That's where the bus line called the one, uh, runs through there. Um, support for their transit hub, um, planning. They are interested. They have been for quite some time doing transportation, doing planning for this specific area. They just weren't quite ready when we were dur- working through this process, but I think that they're getting right to the point where they may, they may be, uh, uh, starting at some point, or at least they're very interested in starting, uh, planning specifically for this area. And the transit hub has been, uh, a subject that has come up a number of times during this process. Um, some of the ridership has mentioned how long it takes to get into that transit hub at the mall and get back out. And it's a little bit of a delay for some people and a little bit of a, of a roundabout, no, pun intended, roundabout way to get, uh, through the area. The, the service frequency in hours is something that they will work out with their planning. Um, we did hear that some people would like to go to the mall, uh, watch a movie and then go home on the bus, but the, the service isn't quite up to that level yet. Um, so that was mentioned a number of times, uh, by the community. The housing, uh, came up a lot during this project. Affordable housing, very important for the community. Um, so we do in the plan have a recommendation for a building height increase for affordable housing. Um, recommend that the city analyze existing properties out there that the city owns. And there are a couple of properties that the city does own on, on Fourth Avenue. Um, continue to partner with affordable housing organizations, especially in regards to looking at where in this area that, that possible affordable housing projects could go. And that leads right into the last bullet there, strategic land purchases. Um, property tend, tends to not go down in price, so, um, the recommendation is to start looking earnestly if there's opportunities out there for buying land for affordable housing projects. It's very expensive. I understand that, but, uh, it doesn't get cheaper. With economic development, again, another chapter in the plan, uh, came up with the corridor planning for Harrison because the economic, uh, uh, it's a very ec- different economic climate within that smaller area with all the small businesses compared to the rest of the area. Um, so economic development would be one part of a corridor plan for there. Some of the other things that came up were the Building Fasod Improvement Program. That has been, uh, utilized in other areas and we did get some interest from the public, from the community regarding that. Uh, they thought that would be a good, some of the, some of the comments said that would be a good way to go to help improve the look of the area. Um, and economic development, district designation, those can be useful tools to, to help with funding specific projects in an area to, especially infrastructure projects. Uh, that's something to continue to look at and it's, it's not something that is done overnight. It's something that takes some study and can be a useful tool to help in areas such as this. Uh, the city does support co-op, co-op businesses currently, so that was recommended to continue doing that. And then ground for commercial financing, that has been used elsewhere. It is a, is an excellent tool, especially in areas where you want a mixed-use building, but the ground floor is difficult to fill. Um, there have been some instances, um, one, one instance I can think of is over in Lacey, not too far from city hall. There's a, uh, everybody I've talked to really likes the, the development there. It's a multi-story apartment complex, but it has, uh, commercial on the ground floor. And over time, it's been difficult. Uh, you can see vacancies there for quite a while. But everybody I've talked to really likes that development. That's the kind of thing that it would support is keeping, keeping the vacancies to a minimum in those kind of developments. Planning Commission did have a public hearing on April first. Uh, they had some comments and their, their letter of recommendation is in the, in the packet. Uh, there, one of their concerns was regarding concentrating affordable housing within one area or within single developments. They'd like to see more focus and more emphasis on mixed-income housing. Uh, there was a lot of discussion about commercial parking minimums and potentially looking at moving those closer to zero, um, provided there is, uh, assessment of the impacts, um, to make sure that there's not going to be a significant impact on nearby areas. Uh, there's more about that in that letter from the planning commission. And then, uh, the last one there about access, uh, safe and easy access to parks and open spaces. Right now, there are no parks within the area, but it is surrounded by several parks and other amenities. Um, however, future residents of the area would have access to those, but the community wanted to make sure and planning commission wanted to make sure that it was safe and easy to access those and any new ones that were built or, or installed within this area. Land Use and Environment Committee had a very good discussion on this. Um, I was, I tried to grab the, the main ones. This doesn't represent everything that was discussed at the meeting, but I tried to, I tried to grab the main ones here. Um, there was some discussion about the Kenyon Center. And if you look on the maps for the, in the plan, it does have a very large dra- uh, dashed circle around the area where Kenyon and Fourth, just north of the mall in that vicinity. However, tying, there was a little bit of a concern, I think we'll probably talk about, you'll probably talk about this a little, in a little bit, little bit of concern about tying the city down to a specific area. So it could be more of a floating air, a floating focus center, uh, location really to be determined. That's how the three other smaller focus areas are, uh, mentioned in the plan. Uh, there is a small, the only, the only rezone proposed in the plan is the north side of Fourth Avenue. Um, there was some discussion about that, that that may be more appropriate within the corridor study and the area to the north, uh, for Harrison as opposed to rezoning it from H, high-density corridor three to high-density corridor four. Um, commercial parking minimums, of course. And then the expanded library and public art, these, these are outlined in the attachment and the, in the, in the, uh, agenda item here. Um, I've, I've made changes in the plan, which are shown as tracked changes reflecting the direction from Land Use and Environment Committee. Housing Action Plan Goals, I did go through the housing Housing Action Plan Goals, I did go through the Housing Action Plan and make sure that the goals were cited. And those are in the plan. The priority levels for the corridor studies and monitoring the multifamily taxes entry program were moved to a higher level if they were not already. And then a section was added regarding coordination for emergency services, police and fire. There's a lot more information about this in that document that is attached to the staff report. We did get input from Washington State Department of Transportation. Last year, in fact, the environmental impact statement was, did address their concerns regarding the environmental analysis for the area. And as a result, there was a thing called a trip cap that was added to that initial environmental impact statement. And that doesn't restrict anybody going in or out of the area. What it does is when development occurs, if it's going to have an impact over a certain level, then it does need to do the full environmental analysis. With this planned action environmental impact statement, what that does is it helps streamline development of a certain level by doing the environmental analysis upfront. So if a larger development comes in, or if there's been a significant amount of other development that adds up to a certain point for a trip cap, then full environmental analysis would be required. This year, DOT suggested we have a second tier of that. So it would be two levels within there. So that's, we have some draft language regarding that in the packet here. And it doesn't have to be all figured out, all the details figured out at this point. This is a subarea plan, so it's a guiding document. That would be in the planned action ordinance. And we work out more of the details regarding those levels, the monitoring and so on within the planned action ordinance. There are a lot of dates on this slide, I apologize. I just wanted to make sure you knew what was going on the last few months, starting with the last community meeting, which was on March 7th. And then we started moving to briefings for the advisory committees, including April 1st. It wasn't a joke, but April 1st, we had a public hearing for Planning Commission. And then Land Use and Environment Committee was on May 9th, and now we're here tonight. And it is on the schedule for July 9th, to come back to you on July 9th. So with that, I do want to introduce the people at the table here. This is the consultant team, or at least a good portion of it. Rachel Miller from Makers was our lead consultant. Bryce Merriman from MXM Landscape Architecture. And we do have Michelle Swanson, senior planner from Transportation here as well. Oh, and online, we have Brian Merriman from LCG. He was, excuse me, the marketing analysis, market analysis was his work. And he's here to answer any questions as well as the team here, so thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Any questions from council? Oh, yes, thank you, Councilmember Madron. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Madron to just give us a rundown on some of the recommended, proposed changes that came out of the Land Use and Environment Committee, which were, a few of those were just on the slide a moment ago. So, Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, if you pass me a note asking me to speak first, I'm going to flag you down if you forget. And just, you know, a few comments on the project itself. You know, our last item that we had this evening was a long time coming. And this is also another project that's a long time coming. And you all know how important the West Side is to me, West Side best side. I said that just to irritate you. But also, the reason that this is in front of us tonight is because we had members of the community come to the Land Use and Environment Committee a couple of years ago and ask us to do something for this area and asked us to add it to our work plan, to which we said, well, our work plan is very full for this year, but we'll see what we can do. And staff went out and were able to find funding to make this happen. So this is several years in the making and it comes from a request from people in the community. And, you know, I've been tracking the process the whole time it's been going on and even spent extra time in the triangle. I already spend a lot of time there as it is, but I walked around, walked around the whole place. I attended one of the meetings that David did at the Capitol Mall Triangle. You know, and as David has highlighted, we have a vision for this area in our comprehensive plan that is currently not possible because of the way that the codes are for that area. And I want to thank David, he's been very, very responsive to the many emails that I've sent to him throughout the process. And I'm really eager for this to move forward so that we can, you know, move past the planning part of it and into the action component of it. Particularly excited about like doing the corridor study for Harrison and Black Lake Boulevard. I think those are really important next steps. And I think it will be really important for the city to be involved in a housing project there to establish proof of concept, just like we did for downtown for the 1234th to show that housing is possible, housing is desirable. So, you know, yes, there is a series of changes that David summarized right there from the Land Use Committee. One of the things was around commercial parking. And we did recommend that we just drop that down to zero. There is currently, I mean, it was an understatement what David said before about sometimes some of that parking is not used there. There's some parking that is never used in that area. It is very abundant. And so just as, you know, we used downtown to kind of experiment with removing residential parking requirements to see what would happen downtown, we're proposing that we do that in the Capitol Mall Triangle regarding commercial parking requirements. David also mentioned the Kenyon Center location. And, you know, before, it was a little bit prescribed on where that might be. But our thinking on the Land Use Committee is that it should follow where development is going to occur. And actually, I followed up with David after our Land Use meeting because then we talked about neighborhood centers and there, for Phone's Road, the language for that is a floating center on Phone's Road because it should follow where development is going to occur. And it's the same thing for the triangle, like, you know, if the city's going to be making investments somewhere, we should know that there's an interest in development in that specific area. Of course, expanding the library, I'm really glad that that was added. In terms of, you know, changing some of the zoning for that bit above Fourth Avenue, if you look at the maps that are in the Land Use Plan, you could see that the way that the parcels are broken out for that area north of Fourth Avenue are much more like the parcels along Harrison than they are along the parcels south of Fourth. And so, and that was one of the, that's some of the feedback that I heard from one of the community members that was asking us to do this, is to please wrap that into the Harrison Corridor Study because there's a lot of opportunity here if we are a little bit more intentional with that area. So that's why that zoning for that area right north of Fourth, that's why that was proposed to be changed. And then, you know, there's actually one thing that didn't make it into this list that we did discuss, and that was having, refining some goals around access management, how we get into and out of the triangle. And those will likely come along with the corridor studies. But, you know, there's also Cooper Point Road on the other side. And just, you know, my experience trying to go in and out of the triangle is that sometimes it's really dangerous, like people trying to make a left turn on a street where there's lots of lanes and pedestrians and bicyclists. And it can be scary as a car and it can be really scary as a pedestrian. So figuring out, you know, there's kind of a boundary around the triangle here where the planning has happened, but somehow we got to get in and out of it. Another thing that we talked about a little bit, and I followed up with Mike Reed, was the concept around the Economic Development District. And when I did talk to Mike, he did say he didn't think that that was the appropriate tool to latch on to in this plan, because that's a multi-county district that's been formed. And they're very unlikely to hone in on one specific area in Olympia. And his recommendation in terms of tools to explore, learn about, and potentially use for economic development were either a local improvement district or tax increment financing, so, which are both also identified in the plan. But the Economic Development District, he didn't feel was very relevant for this component. And, you know, just to wrap up, oh yeah, and I think also, and this has to do with access management too, but just doing a broader transportation study of the area, like, you know, the surrounding areas, which is a larger next step that I think we know we need to do anyway. But just to wrap up, you know, this, I'm eager for this to move forward so that we can do some stuff. That's always exciting. And it's going to require ongoing energy from the city, just like, you know, just like the downtown area has needed our ongoing engagement to make it successful. And it's going to also need to be reevaluated as time goes on. Like, you know, we've got a lot of good changes that are going to come out of this that might spur some development, and it might not be enough. There might be more that we need to do. So we won't be done once we get past this. But I think that, I think that there's a lot of really, really good stuff in here that can lead us to actually fulfilling the vision that we have in our comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Councilmember Madron. Any questions for Councilmember Madron? Mayor Protem, win.
Yeah, thank you for that. Clearly, we have passion among us. So, I just have a question on the economic development maybe not being the appropriate tool to latch on to. So I understand tonight, we don't have our Economic Development Director here. So I'd hate to ask you to go into the weeds, but could you share more about that?
Yeah, so the Economic Development District that was recently formed is like the multi-county one. I mean, Jim might actually be able to speak more to it. But essentially what Mike told me is that, you know, any kind of work they do through that district might have like high level goals around redevelopment of areas that are ripe for redevelopment, which would point to this. But they're not going to go further into the weeds in that because it's multiple counties that are working on it. And so if we want a tool specific to the triangle, we need to, we need something else that we can pick up and use ourselves. But I don't know if Jim wants to elaborate on that as our EDC rep.
Is that okay, Mayor? Yeah, just, I think you said it perfectly. And really, the mechanism of the council, of the new district is to bring big federal funds to regional projects. So thinking about large energy, transportation, you know, those kinds of conversations. And the, you know, the most economically depressed areas in a four county region won't tend to be the Capitol Mall Triangle either. Like, when we think about where federal funding needs to go when you look at that entire region. Though I do wonder if there might be some nuance around the development, like the interchange and the freeway piece of that, because that is more regional. And then I do, I think like the conversation we just went through with the Downtown Improvement District is the exact kind of conversation around an improvement district that Mike was talking about for the triangle.
Great, any other questions? I believe you concluded your presentation correct, so we can ask questions of our panel as well. Yes, Councilmember Gilman.
So on that economic development thread, the, I have concerns about having tax increment financing included in the report before we've learned about who benefits and who pays from that model. I looked at both the MRSC and the state treasurer's guidance, and it's a nuanced list of a number of different kinds of junior taxing districts and levies and which ones still collect their money and which ones would forfeit the funds to help pay for the infrastructure that we're focusing on. So I would appreciate if council could learn first what that picture looks like. You know, who would in effect pay for that infrastructure by foregoing revenue before we consider it as one of our options in the report? Looks like David's ready to respond, if that's okay.
This is the exact reason that we've got Brian Thaneman here. He'll be able to answer that in much greater detail and much more accurately than I'll be able to. So I'll turn it over to Brian at this point.
So, Counselor, I agree with your concerns about tax increment financing. We tried to word it carefully in the report. I mean, I'm looking at the recommendation that we say study and potentially establish a tax increment area. You know, our emphasis was on wanting to put that forward as a potential tool, an optional tool. You know, my view is that since the state legislature essentially refreshed tax increment financing in 2021 and provided cities and counties the opportunity to create two tax increment areas in their boundaries, it's, you know, it's something that can bring a lot of funding to particular areas. And I think, you know, cities are wise to at least study it. In terms of who pays and who benefits, it is a complicated question. It really is quite complicated. As I think you mentioned, often there's 10 or 20 different taxing districts in any given area. But the point I'd make is that, at least the principle, the idea behind tax increment financing is that rather than just cutting up the pie in a different way, and some taxing districts, you know, get less pie and others get more, is that you're trying to, in the ideal situation, you're generating or setting aside some tax revenue for infrastructure projects, which then can increase the size of the pie, can increase the amount of development. So that could be, it could be a road, it could be a stormwater management improvement in the triangle, for example. It could be utilities, in fact, a lot of new, you know, special streets are called for in this area, as well as parks and stormwater improvement, detention vaults. So any of those things, at least conceivably, could catalyze or spur a considerable amount of development. And if, you know, if that is the case, if that does happen, then conceivably, you could catalyze tens or even hundreds of millions of dollars of new development, which wouldn't have otherwise occurred. And so the total property tax receipts for all taxing districts are, then are increased. And after the districts close, then all of the taxing districts receive more money. That's the theory and it needs to be studied in more detail.
Thank you, I appreciate that response. And I, and again, before we would contemplate this, and I'm even concerned about having it in here, until we see some sample, here's somebody's taxes and here's how much wouldn't go to the school district that would otherwise, or wouldn't go to the fire department that would otherwise. I just, I'd like to see that in real life before we contemplate the tool. Because I understand the long range game, just like with the MFTE. Say, well, that's development that wasn't going to be there otherwise. And in a decade, they'll be paying their full share of taxes. So I understand that. I also am just cautious about our subsidizing indirectly, subsidizing the development that way. And if I may, the one other question I wanted to ask, and I'm going to give a slightly long preface, but for me, this whole project is a push-pull of, we want a master plan to have the most human scale, walkable, gridded, town-like redevelopment that we can coax. And I compare that to the town center developments, which to my experience are sort of virtually gated, exclusive, new versions of the mall, like Redmond, Buryan, Renton, Lake Oswego, Northgate, Thornton Place. I was just in Florida and saw the exact same retailers and the exact same streetscape. So my question, really based on that grid map, is what teeth do we have if the, you know, there's like two big REITs that own most of the mall property in the United States and they're redeveloping in this certain pattern? What's different in this plan than what the suburban King County cities had that would create a different outcome? You know, what, all of this work, what do we have that has enough teeth? Like, can we, can we really get that gridded street? Or would we negotiate, it says that we could negotiate street alignments with the developer. Could we wind up looking like one of those town center developments in this area? Or, you know, so it's just what teeth do we have and what is different in here? Or, you know, so it's just what teeth do we have, and what is different in here that's going to make a different development from what one of the big mall owners is doing cookie cutter across the country?
For part of that question, I may just defer to our senior planner, Michelle Swanson. For the cookie cutter part of the question, maybe I'll come back to some of our other support here.
Certainly, this is a very good question, a very complex issue that you've outlined here. We do have requirements right now in our engineering, design, and development standards for new streets. And as David showed in one of the cross-sections on the slide there, those new streets do require, you know, full pedestrian bike facilities, you know, depending on the street classification. And most of those that we've sketched out, those are the major essential streets, would have bike facilities. There are requirements about sizing. One of the things that we're recommending is that this have a smaller block perimeter, and that's one of the things that will ensure that we do get that tightly-gridded network. But there are real challenges with every development proposal when it comes in and it's being reviewed. One of the challenges that we face is if something in the center of this area starts to redevelop, how can we ensure that we are getting right-of-way for a future street if it's in the center of that and it's not connecting into a current street? And we don't have that figured out yet. And so, I mean, I hate to play ping-pong here, but I think, perhaps, Tim, you might be able to weigh in a little bit on what happens when a project is being developed and that type of kind of push-pull that can happen when it comes to getting street connections. Before I do turn it over to you, though, I do want to say, you are all aware that we are updating the comprehensive plan, and that includes an update to the transportation chapter. And we are proposing new language in the transportation chapter that will include clarifying our policy around getting street connections. So that is one of the things that will help when this does get to the hearing examiner level with new development. So that's another piece of this that is sort of out there and sort of informing this conversation. Is it okay to pull you in, Tim, and ask if you want to weigh in on what happens at development?
Yeah, good evening, Tim Smith, and I'm Director of Community Plan and Development. This plays out every day. Projects throughout the city, we have strong street connection policies. We have requirements in our engineering, design, and development standards that call for street connections in certain cases. And so there is some push and pull. It's a meeting with the developer. We, you know, we have project meetings for the community to hear about the projects. We get their input. But ultimately, it's trying to figure out what's best in moving forward with getting a connected street system throughout the city. So there are opportunities really based upon the specific site and surrounding properties. Often, we have to be creative. We work closely with public works. Steve Spire does have the authority to give certain deviations, but we work towards a solution that works best for the city and the developer is able to achieve. And so that would play out within the mall itself. There aren't a lot of answers at this point. I mean, this is a general plan. There's a lot of follow-up work that needs to be done to implement over the course of the next 10, 20 years. But this lays the groundwork, and then we would pursue developments that comes in and what makes the most sense for the project.
City Manager, oh, I'm sorry. Rachel.
Thank you. If I could talk a little bit about how this plan attempts to avoid cookie cutter development. I would say it's not even just town centers that look the same. Any new development, I mean, almost no matter the style, has sort of like this feel that you're in a Disneyland. And it just takes a couple of years for the plants to grow in and for the grittiness to come just a touch, so that it starts to feel like a real place again. So there are two things. One, with any new development, the idea with these catalyst sites is that there would be development agreements, and that you all would be involved in what the city is able to fund. So with the streetscape projects, with the mini-plazas, or for a larger Kenyon Center or maybe Kenyon Center adjacent, larger plaza, there would be your stamp on those public investments in the area. So there were a lot of additions about public art. That's a great way to add Olympia-specific identity. So that's one thing with the new developments. And then there's a lot of emphasis in this plan on keeping what you already have. So one of the reasons that the HTC3 zone still existed and was not made HTC4 around Harrison was an anti-displacement measure. So development could still happen there, but we didn't want to increase development pressure on the area. So keeping what you have there, there's a section on anti-displacement measures. David talked a little bit about affordable commercial space, community land trusts, co-op developments, things to keep what you already have there that really is, kind of feels like the heart and soul of Olympia on the west side in that area. So keeping what you have there already, and then combined with any new development, having your stamp in those public investments were some of the ways we tried to avoid that.
Thank you. I'm going to close with just two real quick things I think are awesome. One is this conversation about art, plaza, a library. I think that having a city investment plan and land acquisition plan as an element of this is really important, because there's, we have a better shot at creating the commons if we control the property, rather than asking for it to be part of each private development. And then, David, your notion you just put out about subsidizing ground-floor commercial struck a chord, because I've been reading about Paris, and that the reality of all those little butchers and bakers is that they have a program like Section 8 in Paris. Because they value those shops, they subsidize the ground-floor retail, small shops that would never pay the market rate, and otherwise, they'd be empty, just like our downtown new buildings. So it's not intuitive, it's not, you know, first blush, I'm like, why would the city or a housing authority invest in that? It's because that's the retail we want to have, and the market's not willing to provide that space. So I'm super intrigued with that. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager Bernie, you had a comment, followed by Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to circle back on Councilmember Gilman's question about tax increment financing. So the language, I appreciate Brian's distinction of how he characterized the language in there. It's "to study it as a tool," which to me, as staff, I just want to give you my guarantee that what that means is, we're not going to implement or move forward with that until we get a chance to study it, including the impacts, and we circle back with council in terms of where you are with that and make sure we have a full understanding. But to leave it in as a tool, I would encourage you to leave it in as a tool to be studied.
And I'll just really quickly respond that 30 years of being a community advocate's left me a little bit scarred that people say, "Well, there's a sentence in a 15-years-ago transportation corridor plan right there that actually that was decided." So...
That is fair. Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I was going to also follow up on the tax increment financing, because Councilmember Gilman and I had a chance to connect before this. And it's not the first time it's come up as a potential tool to be leveraged for something that we need sea-level rise. It's come up in that conversation. And so, you know, what we talked about is, you know, the potential to do, to be proactive on studying it and getting a good understanding of it, so, because it's probably not the last time it's going to come up as a potential tool and get written into some other plan. Then we'll have them all over the place, and Councilmember Gilman will be like, "What's going on?" But we talked about having some kind of study session, dedicated time, probably not this year. I can't see us, you know, rushing to do anything around it, especially with the comp-plan update underway. But being proactive, because with the legislature updating it in 2021, it's like, it's on people's minds as something that we should be looking at, and so let's look at it and understand what it is and who benefits, who pays.
Yeah, and in fairness, I can give you a guarantee, but I'm not going to be here forever, right? So that's, it's a fair point.
Councilmember Partially, I saw your hand up, correct? Okay.
Well, I think Councilmember Gilman and Councilmember Madron kind of covered that a little bit on the getting a study, or getting a study session. Also, you know, I'm not saying that the finance wants to get anywhere near reviewing the sub-area plan, but bringing the finance committee in at some point, when we're starting to talk about infrastructure financing and revenue and everything else, probably is a good idea, because they're also trying to balance the rest of the budget. And what does this look like? So a conversation there. And it would be great if the land use and our consultants and the planners could say, "Okay, now we're ready for finance to start talking about it," whether that's next year, three years from now, whatever it is, and just turn over the financing to them. I had two questions. One is, you sat in here, and I am pausing on it, the, oops, the wrong page, the EIS and the ordinance is, what are we looking at coming back to council for corrections? I'm missing the page, sorry, I had it earmarked.
Was the question, what will the...
Planned Action Ordinance to mitigate issues found in the EIS.
The Planned Action Ordinance basically will, are you asking what would be in it?
Yeah.
Okay. Planned Action Ordinance would establish that TRIP cap. Basically, it's the level at which development would have to do the full environmental review. And Washington State Department of Transportation is recommending a couple of levels in that TRIP cap. So you hit a first level, you have to do certain things. You hit that second level, you have to do the full environmental analysis. That would also entail monitoring. Now, the Planned Action Ordinance would also include, for example, some of the recommendations in the sub-area plan, such as the parking. It could address the design guidelines. I was going to say the rezone, but I think that one's off the table. So those are the kind of things that the Planned Action Ordinance will include, but the main part of it will be the code changes, the development regulation changes, and that TRIP cap language with the monitoring for that for development.
Okay, thank you. That was important. I've been struggling with, how do you get that trigger event to happen? And not, I think Councilmember Gilman was absolutely right. I hate to say it, but there's even parts of Thurston County that I'm driving through, and I'm not sure if I'm in Indiana outside of Denver, or is this really Thurston County? Because it looks identical across the country. So how do you try to keep it uniquely Olympia? And I thought that was a great line of conversation. I, you know, I like the idea of the city investing in a plaza or park to be in control of that. I know you've heard me talk about it before, because I've been following it since I went to the Livable City Conference in Portland, Oregon. They have a huge swath of land. They're now calling it the urban redevelopment, where their Colosseums were. And it just also happens to be where they did eminent den maine and removed three neighborhoods that were primarily African-American and commercial. So they're trying to not only rebuild that portion of town, but also do it in an equity sense. So I'm wondering, is it, do you build the streets and they will come? Because then you can avoid meandering streets that sort of connect to each other, or the sidewalk that goes nowhere. And then, you know, because I remember Richoy's presentation on Franklin Street redevelopment saying, "If we make this beautiful, we may bring the good businesses in," right? So is it the streets? Is it the infrastructure? Or is it partnering, God forbid that I say this, in the city of Olympia with a for-market partner to build for-market housing, so that we ensure we, by not necessarily design, but by opportunity, get inclusional? I'm just looking for the trigger, because something's got to spark this, or it's going to sit there with a bunch of empty streets and, you know, dust rolling down them.
I can start, and I'm happy to hear Brian jump in, and Bryce as well. But the idea with the Kenyon Center catalyst site was exactly that. Do something there, and if the mall ownership group is ready, if there's a developer, do it alongside them, collaboratively work with them to figure it out. If they're not quite ready, Fourth is a public street. Kenyon is a public street. You can do something there now. So those are some triggers that could happen. But then we also really wanted the flexibility, and that's where the other catalyst sites come in, and this idea that, you know, whenever there is development interest, that's a good time. And yeah, either of you want to jump in there?
Yeah, I'd love to jump in. I think it's really risky for the city to go out and spend large sums of money on capital projects without having a clear commitment from, oh my goodness, the lights just went off in the room, I meant. It's risky without having a clear commitment from the private sector that they're going to do something to respond to, you know, a significant investment by the city. There's lots of things you can do. You can continue to study many of the things that we've recommended in the report, which, you know, has some cost. But going out and building streets, parks, plazas, these are all wonderful things. But when I look at the, what I think are positive mall redevelopment projects across the country, we profiled some of those in the market analysis. One of them that I think is possibly the best is called Belmar. It's outside of Denver, Colorado. But in those cases, the cities did partner with the mall owners, and there was a clear understanding that the city was going to do certain things, invest in streets or parks or plazas is a typical one. And the owners of the land buildings were going to build buildings that matched the city's vision, mixed-use housing, affordable housing, mixed-use projects, et cetera. So I think that, I think that you can trigger change here, but you should probably be, the city should be careful. And I think multiple presenters and I have talked about development agreements. That's a tool that I've seen used a lot, and I would look for opportunities to form development agreements here with property owners that share the city's vision of the triangle. And I think there are some.
May I ask a follow-up there? Sure. And then, Councilmember Vanderpool.
I just, in this question about the development agreement and the streets, is, first, just to clarify, is Starwood Group still the 90% owner of the mall? And is Cifaro still owning the Target, everything to the north of the mall there? And then, have you either worked directly with them, or are these guidelines that they suggested?
Yes, Cifaro still does own the Target Place, and we have interacted with, met with that group a couple of times. They did indicate they're quite interested in this. They have done development elsewhere on their properties in other parts of the country, where they've actually redeveloped a parking lot into a high-density residential development. As for the mall ownership makeup, I don't have the specifics on that.
Just wondering, who you spoke, was it just like the management of Capitol Mall, or did you speak to the Capitol Development people for the national REIT that owns it?
The second thing you said. Yeah. It was, they flew in, they come in a couple of times a year, a few times a year, and when they did all come in, we met with them. And in fact, right at the beginning of the project, there was a gentleman who had flown in from the Middle East all the way here. So it was very interesting to meet him as well. He represents part of the ownership. The company that represents ownership and runs multiple malls across the country, we met with those, with that group of people, as well as the mall management right here in town. So we have met with them a number of times.
And so my question is, in terms of development agreement we might eventually end up with, did they, and to this cookie cutter question, did they offer, "This is the kind of height, density, this is what we're looking for"?
They were primarily looking for flexibility, and they did, they were... They were primarily looking for flexibility, and they did, they were seeing that the trends around the world are for malls like this to redevelop with a mix of uses and much more housing involved. So they were looking for basically as much height as they could get and flexibility. So I don't know, Brian, if you want to add any more from those meetings?
I agree with what you said, Rachel, which is that, yeah, they wanted flexibility, and they were certainly interested in building housing, at least conceptually, particularly on the mall site, and then also Cifaro. And I think there was possibly one other owner that expressed interest in housing. And they were supportive, seemed to be supportive of the various plans that we showed, but I'd hesitate to provide more specifics than that. I'm not sure I could remember them.
Councilmember Vanderpool.
Yeah, so I'd like first by thanking Councilmember Madron for bringing up transportation before I went really into transportation, because it is a concern, and we have to focus on the Triangle subarea. As much as I, the areas around it, the moat, as I like to think of it, is, until we change the moat, it's going to be hard for people to get into it. So I am looking forward to the planned action ordinance, but I do have some questions about this trip cap. Is that optional? Or is that recommended from WashDOT? Because trip cap feels a lot like a level of service, meaning you're always looking for more active, you're not, you're looking at car volumes rather than bicycle future possible transportation alternatives. Michelle.
Yeah, glad to field this. So the question is, you're relating the trip cap to a level of service, and I'm seeing it very, very differently. So I think it's valuable to just pause for a moment and go back to the definition of an environmental impact analysis or an environmental impact statement. We did do an EIS for this project, and the State Environmental Protection Act, which governs that, defines the environment not only as the natural environment, which is what I usually think of when we talk about the environment, it also defines the environment as the built environment. And, you know, this was a law that was passed in the 70s, and it defines a negative impact on the built environment as being traffic congestion. So that is, was identified as being an unavoidable, am I getting the terminology here right? An unavoidable impact, a negative impact? And so that is something that we need to mitigate. So the trip cap is designed to mitigate that particular environmental impact, and that is all it is designed to do.
And I could add that it was not considered an unavoidable impact because these were strategy corridors for the city. However, the WashDOT, as a regional agency, has a different level of service that they do need to uphold.
Thank you, yes. And a strategy corridor is a corridor in which we will accept a high level of traffic congestion, and we will focus instead to increase mobility by making it easier for people to walk, bike, and take the bus.
Thank you. I do have a follow-up, though, a specific follow-up about the mall area. I was told that the very end of the mall area, the very, the southern end of it, at Cooper Point and Black Lake, they can't do a roundabout. But what is stopping us from doing traffic filtering down to a lane and then a roundabout? And then on the other side of that, you're in an urban area, and you just have one lane. You don't have more than one lane for cars.
Are you speaking in terms of Cooper Point or Black Lake?
The intersection.
Okay, so in both legs, or all four legs of the intersection, then?
Yeah, merging down to an acceptable amount of traffic.
Well, the reason why I'm asking you about this is there is a recommendation for a corridor study on Black Lake Boulevard. And so certainly the operations of that intersection would be included in that study. That would be a good opportunity for us to examine those potential options. Additionally, when the next stage of the West Olympia Access Project, that's the US-101 interchange project, that is funded beyond 2029 for design and right-of-way acquisition. And that'll be an opportunity for us to revisit some of the original design assumptions, and that would be an opportunity for us to examine the operations of that intersection to look for ways to improve it.
Thank you. I have another subject, okay. So the other part of this that I'm a little concerned about when it comes to housing inside and development is, one of the things that I feel the city of Olympia needs more of is small developers, first-time developers, local developers, rather than big companies building large buildings. We do need them, but them alone will not meet the capacity that we need. How much of this plan considers, you know, first-time, small developers that are, you know, that would, that run into barriers that aren't, we don't have enough of nationally, especially in Olympia?
Well, I can at least say that it was trying to remove development barriers, and so that should help any developer coming in. And Brian, I don't know if you want to add anything that could really talk about this?
Sure.
Smaller, homegrown businesses.
I, I think your interest in having more small developers is wonderful. I would love to do some small-scale development of my own. But I worry that in many regards, the Triangle, large parts of the Triangle are going to be tough places for small developers to get started. And I think the best places for small developers are small lots that are, you know, 5,000 square feet, 10,000 square feet, many of the infill lots. And there are some of those between, for example, between Fourth and Harrison. And, you know, we've talked about some of the zoning in there, it's slightly more appropriate for small developers. At the same time, some of the very large lots that are in the mall itself and various other parts of the Triangle, there's going to be really big capital costs because of the roadways that we're expecting there, some of the often kind of area-wide stormwater improvements that are required. And then just demoing the parking lots that are there. For better or worse, I would say that, as you say, when you look at mall redevelopments, they do tend to have large-scale housing and mixed-use developers. I think, I think it'll be a challenge to change that. I think the, I would recommend that your efforts are best spent on making sure that anything that's developed there is really high-quality and unique and special and has art. I think the scale of developer, I think it's going to be hard to have small-scale developers in many parts of the mall, but as I said, possibly between Fourth and Harrison, other places where lots are small.
And if I could add, there's also an opportunity, there are two publicly-owned parcels, I think in that area as well, and so you have a bit more control. And even in these larger developments, they can be teams of developers, and so there can be one local affordable housing developer that's a small business. So you can put out in the RFP requirements for things like that if it's a city-owned parcel.
Yeah, so that's why I would like to mention, this got brought up earlier, is the council approval of every parcel, every development. Is that realistic? Is that, would it just come to us for every single time something gets redeveloped? Or would that, you know, would we hear about it in the newspaper?
Well, if it's city-owned, then you would be very much involved in, you know, selecting the developer, much like Boulevard Road right now. They would go through a process, development reposess, just like every other project app would do in the city. So you'd have that control up front, choosing the developer, and then they would go through the process for approval with the city staff.
And I do-
Should I just add on to that? The other side of that is, obviously, if it's not city-owned, right, then the market drives it, right? And as long as people are within development codes and regulations, development happens, businesses happen the way they happen now. So I think, as you look at your planned ordinances, making sure that you have those set to the best you can to get what you'd like to have, but it's really hard within that realm just to be fully transparent to guarantee anything. But you can be deliberate, and we can be as deliberate as you can, and that's how you get there.
To that point, I mean, I get concerned about on the map, some of the grid will cut through some forested areas, and I've brought up this in the past when it was on land use. The issue being, the issue being that some of that is forest, is heavy-forested, and that building a full-scale road, even one that has mixed use, may end up knocking down some trees. And so I may have brought this up in the past, the idea of having streets that are more flexible under that. I know the EDs has to be very stern about certain things, but I'm always, I'm a little concerned about if we wanted to do a grid, could we, and we had to work with the development and get subdivided, could we have the option to say, hey, can this just be a bike path if it's, if they're surrounded by trees, if it's surrounded by already protected things?
I'll be happy to field that. We do have provisions already in the EDs for just that sort of occasion, in which a deviation can be requested by the city engineer, and we do have provisions that do allow for pathways, is what we typically call them, so bicycle pedestrian trails to be built instead of streets in certain circumstances.
And that wouldn't affect the distance between the buildings for setbacks, or would it, if you had two buildings next across from each other? I know it's kind of odd.
I don't know if I can answer that.
Okay.
Yeah. Would somebody from planning want to weigh in on that?
I'm quite interested in your question.
So if you had a development happen, and then you had to build a path adjacent to that path, usually you have a street which is wide enough for setbacks, so you don't have a shadow of one building right next to each other. If you end up having another building built across from or adjacent to it, and you create a path rather than a full road, would that, would we run into any sort of code conflicts?
Can I answer, I don't know, we haven't written the code yet.
Okay, okay.
But we could address those situations. I mean, there's supposed to be building stepbacks, and there's some other things in there, but we would have, we could design the code to address those types of things.
Okay. And that's it?
Okay. So I do have two quick questions. One is around the mention of the MFTE, obviously monitoring that. I'm assuming that by monitor you mean, obviously, looking at this area as really, we just redid our MFTE. So we're looking at this area to see if, we're monitoring it to see if it's doing what we intended to do by developing more affordable housing in this area, is that correct? Okay, I just wanted to be, state that, you know, very clearly, because I think there's a lot of interest in our community around what we've done with this program and what that means for this area. I appreciate the Planning Commission's recommendation on mixed-use housing for this area. I think we heard from some of the, some of the community feedback in many of the meetings that you had about being very intentional, about having affordable housing in the area. I know that, and the concern about creating segregated areas based on income as we develop. And so I appreciate the Planning Commission for boosting that. My other question's related to Harrison Avenue Corridor Study. So obviously, it looks like you're looking at doing some anti-displacement analysis along there. Obviously, there's some consideration of how the, how we would incorporate inner-city transit and busing along Harrison Avenue. But I am curious about how we're conducting just the move, the analysis of the movement of traffic in general along Harrison Avenue. I know I've certainly have taken forth at times to avoid Harrison Avenue, and so what's the, what's the impact to going through neighborhoods to avoid those main corridors? So I would appreciate hearing a little bit more about the Harrison Corridor Study as it pertains to that specifically.
Everyone's looking at me, so I know that's my question.
You just got to keep on looking the other way.
Yeah, thank you for raising this issue of the traffic dispersing onto other streets. We haven't scoped this study. There's a big land use component to it, as you heard earlier this evening. So I think as we're discussing Harrison Avenue, what's emerging is that this will need to be a very multidisciplinary study. And so there's the issue of land use, which is closely related to what's happening on the land that's in front of the land use, that is to say, the street, and the operations themselves. There are lots of things to consider, and we do need to really drill down on this. You mentioned inner-city transit's needs on that section of Harrison Avenue. Inner-city transit did pass with, the passage of Proposition 1, they did include high-frequency transit along that section of Harrison Avenue. So what's that going to look like? What are they going to need in order for that to truly be high-frequency transit? Are they going to need transit signal prioritization? Are they going to need some possibly business access and transit lanes? That is to say, dedicated lanes for transit that people can use to access business? What's, we know we have, Councilmember Madron brought up issues of access management. We know we have significant access management issues along Harrison Avenue. Do we need to have some control on there? Do we need to have medians? We have roundabouts planned in the long term, but in order to build those roundabouts, they are likely going to have, we're going to need right-of-way, and they will likely impact adjacent businesses. Which businesses? To what degree? These are all the sorts of things that need to be figured out, and that's precisely why this is recommending a study, because we need to study this before we take those types of actions. Did I answer your question?
It does. I just thought maybe, I'm like, am I missing something? But that clarifies that it's within, within this specific recommendation to study it further, so I appreciate that. Thank you. Councilmember Cooper, followed by Councilmember, oh, sure, if that's okay, Councilmember Cooper. Okay, Councilmember Madron, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
Yeah, I wanted to respond more to your question, both around the MFTE monitoring and mixed-use, mixed-income housing. So with MFTE monitoring, when we updated the MFTE program, we set a fee in lieu for the eight-year multifamily tax exemption. And so the idea that, that the consultants that worked with us on that one said, like, that we should be assessing that every five years to make sure that our fees are appropriately set, because it could be that we're getting the kind of housing that we hope to get with the tools that we put in place, but maybe we're not charging a high enough fee at a certain point. The market has developed enough. So that's one of the parts of that. And so that's, with monitoring with the MFTE, that's what we're talking about, is like assessing, you know, could we be charging a higher fee in lieu on the eight-year MFTE to make sure that we're getting something back for affordable housing? And we also did significant changes to the 12-year. You know, we now, for the 12-year MFTE, we now require 100% of the units to be affordable to 80% AMI or below. And so is that working? And that leads into the next topic around mixed-income housing. And I actually, I met with the chair and vice chair of the Planning Commission over the weekend and chatted with them about this, where mixed-income housing's been really challenging. You know, we haven't found that, those who have been interested largely in the 12-year multifamily tax exemption are affordable housing developers, like, that is their line of business. There's challenges with financing mixed-income housing, there's challenges with insuring mixed-income housing, there's challenges with having developers that are interested in managing both market rate and then having some units where they have to monitor people's income. And so that's, that's just some of the challenges that we found, and Darian could talk with you at length about all of this. But I shared some of those challenges with the leadership on the Planning Commission just to let them know, like, you know, why we're not seeing more mixed-income housing in Olympia. income housing in Olympia and it has a lot to do with developer interest.
Yeah, especially as we talk about that fee in lieu, right? And it's just pay the fee instead of building the unit, developing the units, right? So there we go with our, with our plan to have mixed-use development. But I, I do think, I hate to say it, but some of that feels very systematically intentional. You know, as we, as we try to work on desegregating our communities. So anyway, councilmember Cooper.
Yeah, just a couple of thoughts I wanted to try and get in, not really questions. I, I'm also excited, it's, it's a long time coming to have this, have this work be here in front of us. Just a couple of things to think about. One, one is communication. Once we finalize the plan, I think it would be important to do something back out to all of these numbers that we've communicated with. One comment that I heard was from some folks that are in us, inside the triangle where there's a bunch of small local businesses renting space and they have heard that there's multinational corporations that are going to knock their building down and build new stuff tomorrow. And they're worried about their businesses and their livelihood. And I know, I, you know, I know that none of that is real, but I think it'd be really good for us to put some assurances in place for the people who do live and the smaller businesses especially within the triangle. The other thing that I, that I've been thinking a lot about is Northgate. I don't think Northgate's quite like the other comparisons that, that Clark made. I've watched it go and growing up in the North Sound, watched it go from the park, empty parking lots to a transit-oriented development that is actually pretty nice, I think. And to the, to the point where the Kraken just located their training facility there, can't see parking lots, you have a light rail sta, station. And it was because of the early investments and the early planning that, that got to that point. The apartments that came in on the edge before they, they developed the mall property. And so our space is bigger than Northgate. And so I just, I, I carry that because I think it's important to think about that and get it right. If there, if I was going to change anything about the plan today, it would be to draw a roundabout at Cooper Point and Black Lake Boulevard. I think that we could do that with no implications. Like we're going to study it, we're going to get it right, but we know that a signal-controlled intersection is not working now and the, all of the stuff that will be done to build the interchange will only alleviate future growth in traffic. It will not fix any of the problems that we're experiencing today. I would also draw the Bus Rapid Transit Lane from the Downtown Transit Center to the Mall Transit Center and then to Evergreen, but I'll wait for the Harrison study to do that. I've been sitting with this a lot since the Land Use Committee and the thing that is really standing out the most for me is when I first started on council, I'd have to go back in history to get this exactly right, but we were in the middle of downtown project 2.0. And now we're 20 years into emphasis on our downtown that started with $100 million or more in public investment that brought housing and now is bringing businesses that, and, and like we have to control parking on the evenings and weekends, like because of those investments. And so while I, I totally get the less landowners, pub, big public money might not be the best first move because there's so much fewer landlords in, or landowners in that space, but back in those days with the downtown conversation, there was no plan on the shelf. It was what can we do today? What can we do tomorrow? What can we do the next day to actually bring fruit to our work? And I think that's the thing that I want to make sure that we do the day after we pass this is how do we keep this at the council level on a super regular basis? This is our, probably our biggest opportunity in the whole city when we look at opportunity sites for economic development and housing other than Martin Way maybe, but it, it, it really is, is significant. And so I was thinking about that, like we, you know, we built Percival Landing, the Hands-on Children's Museum, Lot, City Hall, and, and in this, there's a lot of public amenities. The, the plaza space, a possible pool, library expansion, transit center, housing, affordable housing and, and, and more. And, and really think that that's the place where we should lean in with the local developers to look at, what are, or the local landowners to look at, what are the public amenities that we'd like to see here and can we start planning for those now so you can plan your developments around them? And, and, and let's negotiate those, an agreement to get to that because I think that's how we can churn some planner maps into something, a vision that people can see in communities when you start drawing the plaza space on the ground and say, this is where we're going to grow the library or this is where we're going to be, build the pool or, you know, just to throw it out there, this is where we're going to put the pitch for the Artesians. Because that would be so cool to go and watch a, a, a game right there in the city. But, but, but really to, to stop my rant and say, how, how do we keep this going? Because it's, it's, it's too significant to just put it with the other master plans.
I, I just, I wanted to clarify that I'm not knocking the town centers or Thornton Place. What I was, and it's that I don't think it's about having an Olympia vibe or look or feel and I don't think it's that those are bad developments, but all of this work we did that called for a pedestrian, human-scale environment, what can we do? What can we include in here that has some teeth to help make it so that it's not a big hotel or office building with a strip of retail on the bottom? Because frankly, people don't interact the same way as they do in a downtown. And so the more that we can have an overlay that's similar to downtown, I think the more successful it is for people of multiple incomes and ages to, to move around and, and conduct their life there. So that's, that's my interest is not about whether we can brand it like Olympia or whether we can reject that development, but if we did all this work and we get the same darn thing, then why did we, why did we do this? Why did we do the public outreach and all this research? If we're, if we're simply what was, you know, facilitating what General Growth Properties or Simons wants to develop, right? Then we could have just done height requirements and flexibility on our ads and said, we're good, come on in. So that, that's my interest is, is about claiming as much of a walkable, human sort of place as we can.
Councilmember Vanderpoel followed by councilmember Parsley.
Totally agree. So here's a couple of recommendations, I've been taking notes, you know, some ideas here. So we're talking about how there's a lack of like a bunch of small parcels, but there are some strip malls on, in the triangle and on the edge of the triangle. And then if we wanted to be strategic, we could work to purchase these things. And if we're, if we're able to purchase them, then we can work to get parcel them up and have that, I, I talk about small developers, be able to put in that missing middle that could be on the edge of it. Because the small developers are the people who would do a missing middle. And so I'm thinking of ways in which we can include different income housing and a way to do that is to have different levels of development. The other, the other part of this that I, I find important is that, so that you don't displace people, so that you, the, the whole conversation about mixed income. I really, what it seems to come down to is a community investment. So as, as the mall area starts to be developed, we also have to ensure that everything around it gets some level of reinvestment, some sort of more housing of different, of different heights and different levels so that you're not just getting a huge amount of large development happening in one spot. You have all, everything else around it that's occurring. Another thing that I, I want to ask, sorry, Michelle, I'm asking another question. What's stopping us from doing a demo as the study rather than doing a technical paid-for study?
By demo, you mean putting up some orange cones and just?
Yeah, yeah, just studying it real time.
Yeah. You know, we have been asked about doing some sort, you know, doing interim improvements, which is essentially, I think, what, what you're suggesting. And what's challenging for us in Olympia is that, you know, you see those types of interim test projects happening in larger cities for a reason. And it's because they have the operating budgets that can support it. We have a tremendous amount of work to be done and not a lot of people to do it, to be honest with you. During COVID, when there was, cities were closing down streets to create, you know, larger spaces for pedestrians, we looked into doing that and we didn't have enough traffic cones or, you know, the, the traffic barrels in order to do that. So, I mean, we have some real significant challenges because we do not have the operating crews that these larger cities have that do those types of projects. We did experiments with the bike corridor by initially building it out with interim materials. What happened is we had to do two capital projects and when you do two capital projects, you have all of the overhead that goes with capital projects. And it ended up being more expensive, I, I suspect, than if we had just built it out the first time. So those are some of the real challenges. Additionally, in order to do that, you still need to engineer it. You know, someone needs to be looking for, you know, conflicts at intersections. Someone needs to go through and make sure that it's truly safe in order to do that. And that also takes staff time and resources. And we are, as you know, you know, looking for a new engineer right now in order to help increase our capacity at delivering capital projects in order to meet the expectations that the new funding that you approved has, has set forth for us.
I will say though, consider incremental design in, when we're writing comprehensive plan chapter because I think, I think although we have our limitations, I think doing a gradual design is, is kind of an important thing to do. I know large cities do it, but I do think it, it is a very important thing that could help us figure out the errors before we start laying concrete.
Thank you.
Yeah. The, the last thing, and this is, has to do taxes and I wanted to bring this up. I am, I am an unapologetic fan of the economist Henry George who believes in the idea of land value tax, although we can't do that in Washington State. I'm asking the question, what is stopping us? Although we, we have some freedoms to tack to doing things like a multifamily tax exemption, what is stopping us from experimenting with the idea of removing structures and improvements from a property tax in a, in a certain area to see if that spurs development?
Do you have a reply to that, councilmember Madron? Okay.
I think it would have the opposite effect because wouldn't you want property taxes to be higher until an area is developed? No? Okay. We could talk about it later.
Councilmember Parsley.
Well, I'm going to weigh in because in some cities, they're actually increasing the tax because there's too much vacant storefronts and they're not paying enough so they don't care if they're leasing or their lease is so high that it can't be done and they're sitting on the property as a value, vestment value for the future that may never come. So there are cities that are actually doing the opposite to try to get the vacant storefronts and the vacant offices filled with people so that the landowners are actually paying their taxes because it's higher. So I think you could go both ways depending upon where it was.
Wouldn't that be like a, a vacancy fee rather than?
Well, but they're also doing a tax, doing it as a tax. And I, I got this from Renata Rollins and she looked into it quite a bit, very successful. So anyways, my point is I, I just want to just feed into the tax argument, but I, I just want to support what councilmember Cooper said about finding a way to negotiate with the landowners to start doing some public amenities. Plaza, park, something that starts to draw people there outside of the mall and the small businesses. Because then we, and as I think even our city manager said and mayor, then we have control of it too. And in perpetu, I can't say that word, long time. And so I just think that's a good way because I was, I've always been wondering, sparking, how do we do this? And then how do we keep it Olympia without being that, you know, I don't know, the teeth is, I think, councilmember Gilman said. And then city manager, I agree with you, be intentional in our codes because we don't want to be involved in every single development.
Okay. Mayor Protim, question?
I don't have a question. I, I feel like the study session, at least from where I'm sitting, is being, this is being thoroughly explored. I just wanted to add my voice to a couple of things that I sort of uniquely care about. I understand that this is a huge document, very, very important planning. And some of those unique things that I am really glad that, that we're considering in this process is just that, actually, this last conversation about how do we, how do we draw out community, right? How do we have places where community can be just that, is, is practicing community? And, and it's not just about housing and businesses, which is really important, but what are those, what are those places that create that feel? And then of course, I think what we're saying here is then the development will come, right? Those businesses will want to be where the people are at. And, and there's, there's more recreation and more to do overall. I'm, I'm really intrigued by the, I guess, the desire for, for small development, whatever that means. Realizing that small developers are likely not going to take up space and be able to have the capacity, the resources to develop on a, on a really large lot. And Rachel, is that your name? Rachel, thank you for pointing out that through our city processes, at least with city-owned land, we are able to ask folks to essentially practice supplier diversity, right? Practice, or also called business diversity, is we can have, if not a requirement, but a preference that people partner. That could be subcontracting, that could be other creative partnerships with small developers. And so we talk about economic development, it's giving more people opportunities, right? And then really, really interested in keeping Olympia sort of uniquely Olympia has been a part of this conversation too, which makes me think about design review and how we can impact that process. So like what does it mean? Because I, I also think that each one of us probably have a different idea of Olympia and, and the things that we like, what are those characteristics about whether it's the built environment, you know, or more? And so how do we get at those, the design review standards? I mean, I think kind of the most extreme example is when you go to Leavenworth, you know you're there, you know? You know you're in Leavenworth, even if you're at the subway there, you know you're there. So, so what are those things that make Olympia Olympia and how do we, how do we impact those standards? Because if I was a, a big chain retailer and as long as I was following all of the policies and, and the, the design standards, then yeah, it would be so much easier for me to just do what I've always done. So why would I not do that? Right? So anyways, appreciate this discussion and those are kind of where my interests lie. Thanks. And also fantastic work on behalf of the Land Use Committee. So, so thank you for that. And I can see that Land Use members are still having ideas churning, as evidenced by some of the discussion tonight. Thanks.
Yes, we can, but it is now 9:18. So, well. So, well, I really appreciate the, the robust discussion this evening. We are certainly looking forward to having this come back to us on July 9. And obviously, at that point, we'll be, as Councilmember, I think it was Councilmember Madron that said earlier, really looking forward to actually seeing this in action and getting beyond sort of the planning phase of this. It's been a long time coming and we've been at it for a while now. So, yeah, very much looking forward to that. And in particular, the Harrison corridor study. So, yeah, I'm just, I have lots of concerns about impacts, is all, to neighborhoods as we envision sort of blending commercial and residential and, and creating community space together. I want it to flow very nicely, as I'm sure we all do. But yes, just thank you very much for your work and we very much look forward to seeing you all on the 9th. Any additional questions or comments? All right, seeing none, with no further business, before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.